Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For our permission, we do have Councilperson Olivera is here by telephone from Hawaii. And it was outside, under a palm tree, Mai Tai in hand. Say hello, Joe.
Hello, Joe.
Okay, he's here. Okay, good. Okay, we need to move on. Approval of the agenda. Does anybody have, anybody at all have any reason to want to change the order of the agenda or make any amendments?
Move. Okay, move the agenda. Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Faldor, seconded by Councilperson Herman to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Under staff updates, we do have our consolidated report provided by the staff. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding that report?
Yeah, Joe, I have something to add.
Okay, Joe, why don't you go?
On Friday, I was wondering if you would be there if she could speak a little bit to the TOT issues and revamping on the agreements with various vendors, other issues with having some holes in it, creating some problems in the audit.
Good evening. Yes, I am just at the tail end of finishing out all the letters to all the vendors, some of them commending the vendors for properly calculating the tax, others reporting a deficiency per the auditors. We have some questions that I've reviewed with the attorneys on some of the deficiencies, but we felt that ultimately what the auditors came up with was what we should rely upon. So, we're kind of going out with the statements as the auditor, or the deficiencies as the auditors had calculated them. If we get any complaints or any further problems on those issues, they may want to come back to the board, but we'll bring those back to the council, we'll bring those back to council as they request them.
There was some concern about vagueness in the instructions. Has any of that been addressed, or have we sent out basically the same instructions as we had before?
No, I'm going to send out a letter to all vendors, not just the ones who were audited, to speak specifically to the things that we found people were, the holes they were falling into, and addressing all those issues and reminding them that their reporting requirements are quarterly and that we have some penalties if they don't abide by them. That should go out tomorrow as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I had a question, two of them actually. One, this is for Dave, community development panel. I wanted to know the Utica Hotel, the conditional use, kind of where it's at with the Utica, update that, and then I have another one.
Okay. Utica Hotel, yes, they submitted an application for a conditional use permit to submit their, to change their liquor license from a 48 to a 47, which requires them to, they can no longer serve food, it's just the bar and no one under the age of 21. That's going to the planning commission next week, and so after that, then they'll have that, they'll have that in their, in their, so that's where that's at. It's going to the planning commission next week.
Any timeline?
Huh?
Any timeline that is going?
Of when they're going to complete?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, I mean, they're working, I met with their, I met with Piero and Furman, what, a couple of days ago? They're looking like a lot of it will be done here before the holiday, but they probably won't be able until after due to some of the water issues and some of the handicap ramp issues that they're having with the property. But, who knows, it could be sooner than that, but that's just kind of where we're at right now.
Okay, and I had one other, but, I don't know, it says certified pure laboratories conditional use permit?
Yeah.
What is that?
That's a, that's a recent project that just got, that just came across my desk. They filed an application, it's a, it's a laboratory, manufacturing, distribution, warehouse facilities on about a five-point acre site, five-point acre, five-point-o acre site behind Middleton's, and so that's something that we're working on, that's going to be a pretty big project, so.
What is, what is, what kind of laboratory is it?
Well, it is, they do agricultural products as well as cannabis, as well as, and then the distribution and manufacturing of it.
Okay, so if we, they'll have to have a permission, the council will have to agree that we want to have cannabis in the city in order for that to be?
The manufacturing and distribution.
Yeah, we'd have to agree with that.
And the laboratory purposes.
And the laboratory, so we'd have to agree with that in order for it to be able to continue. Thank you.
Well, I mean, you could, you, the council, the commission could hear that item as we, unless there's an ordinance in place, and right now there's no ordinance in place, so they can move forward until either there's-
Until we make it.
Until they can move forward as long as there's no ordinance in place, or if there's an ordinance in place, a line for those types of businesses, then they can continue to move on, so.
Right, yeah, no, I understand. It's just whether or not we have an ordinance, it includes those or not, and how soon we have it.
No, yeah, I mean, right now they're under a conditional, they apply for a conditional use permit, since we don't have a, we don't have a necessary ordinance for that, so it's, so that's why we're doing the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. Dave, go ahead and stay up there.
No problem.
In regards to the Mark Twain Medical Center?
Mm-hmm.
How, I see that Caltrans finished comments and the environmental?
Yep.
Is completed, so?
Is completed, so it's going to the commission next Wednesday on the 25th as well. We are, they have received their, their first comments from plan check for the building, and so hopefully, they, once they, and only after the first plan check, they usually get those right and they resubmit and do that, which I think they, I think they've resubmitted because I see some plans on, that came in, I don't know what they're for, but they came in from our, our, our plan checker, so that might be it for the plan, so they would, they potentially could, after the entitlement, could pull the billing permit if the plans are all, all set for it. So, hopefully they'll pull the billing permit within a couple of weeks, two, three weeks of the plan.
Do we, do we know what Caltrans recommended in regards to the light?
Uh, yeah, they, they recommended a traffic signal, which is what we thought it was. There are some issues that the clinic's going to have to deal with as part of the encroachment process, their, their encroachment process with Caltrans, but we've covered everything in our environmental documents, so if and when they do come and they ask for that, then we're, then we're covered.
Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I have a question for Myers, and then one for the chief. I was just following up with light downtown, and I know I'd asked about it last time, I didn't notice it in the report on if there was any update on that.
We're still going to have to check that one out a little bit. You're asking about the light at the visitor center.
The light, yeah, all the lights down there, yeah. Because it's stupid oak.
I had the power works crew check it out, and what they're saying is that as the lights come, the cars coming down the hill, well, the headlights will hit the sensor on the light and turn it off.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta see that one, so.
Okay.
But that's the answer they gave me.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
That seems like an easy fix.
Yeah.
No, it needs a shroud.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to see what the reasoning, if you found a reasoning for that. Thank you.
Okay.
And then Todd, in relation to Potanga's dog, what, did they talk about it going with him, or is it staying?
The plan at this point is to find an agency that wants to purchase him.
So, why wouldn't we let him go with?
Steve, Steve wants him to continue to work, he's-
Oh, okay, so the position he has will not allow him to have?
No, he's going, yeah.
Okay, I guess, okay. Did I just see, why didn't he, they're partners, why aren't they going together in a food to hold up with us, you know?
I appreciate that, no, yeah, he, he was a hard decision for him to make, but he, he's not going to be able to work the dog where he's going, and he, because the dog's technically in his prime right now, age-wise, he really feels strongly that the dog deserves to continue working with an agency that wants to put him to work, so we're going to try and find a home for him.
And there's no way for us on?
I'm contemplating that, I really, at this point, don't have any, I wish I did have somebody, because I really don't want to lose this dog, but the problem is, I really don't have anybody that's demonstrated any real interest in, in being a handler, that is qualified to do it. I mean, I have one person that is very interested, but that individual's still a probationary employee, and there's a lot of responsibility and a lot of other things that go into play, so I really don't want to lose him, but we're going to have to kind of wait and see how that all plays out.
Okay. Dave, I thought it was, that there was a way we could keep him, I didn't realize he wasn't allowed, his position didn't allow for it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Yep, I'm good.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
In regards to, under engineering and public works, down at Triumph Park, we've got broken fencing, and we have fencing that is needed to keep the utility companies from driving their trucks onto the park to service their equipment, and trucks are breaking the sprinkler heads. What, what utility companies are doing this?
I think it's the telephone.
Huh?
I think it's the telephone company.
Okay.
And that's why the fence was erected in the first place, and during the last winter's high storm, there was some bank erosion on the creek, which dropped the fence into the creek, so when they went to repair that, they made sure they had to repair it, because that was why the fence was installed in the first place.
Okay, and, and the trucks are driving onto the park to service their equipment?
There were, if you look, there's a, there's a switch panel or some sort of panel down, excuse me, there's a panel down in there on the bottom.
Okay. So, yeah, and they're just, okay, and we haven't, there's been no actual witnesses, so we can't say, hey, maybe you should pay for this instead of us?
Well, since they put up the fence, nobody's been doing it, so, yeah.
Okay, just, just wondering. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Okay, we'll move on to council updates. Councilperson-
Stat, I got one more thing for Dave Meyer.
Oh, okay.
We had some discussion about a lot of repairs being needed at Utica Park, and that's kind of fallen off the radar, and wondered if Dave could give us a status on, you know, the uprights for the covered area and anything that might be going on with regard to the bandstand or the-
The shade structure and the gazebo.
The gazebo, yeah.
Well, there's two parts there, there, we're going to do some repairs to the shade structure, that I have the plans drawn up for, we're just waiting for winter, because that's a great winter project for somebody. As far as the gazebo, that's kind of an- I'm starting something new, I'm going to bring the crew down into Utica Park on Friday, and then just pick their brains and try to figure out some, some projects to do in the park to improve it over the winter, something that we could do. You know, there's some tree stumps we can pull, there's some wood things we can fix. That's, that's all brand new right now, it's in the back burner.
In regards to the gazebo, I know that people say, oh, they like it for the shade area, et cetera, but am I mistaken? I, I thought that whole area was basically shaded by the trees.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, and I know that that structure is basically just a mess, would it just be better to get rid of it?
Yeah, the, the structure isn't limping along. Couple of years ago, I, I tried to secure some funds for replacing it, and that didn't make that budget, it didn't make this budget, but what I want the guys to do is take a look at it, if there's anything that's possible that can be fixed, if there's a nail sticking out, there's a board that's broken, it's our, our job to fix it, and so I want them to focus on the park a little, a little more.
Veronica, we did have the Rotary looking at that as one of the projects, they may improve that for us, I'm not sure if they've agreed, they're looking at the dog park, they're looking at that, they're looking at a garden area at the park, so that is still in the works, I was just checking with, that's why I was communicating with Debbie over there, because I wasn't quite sure, but it is still in the works, that the Rotary is still looking at projects for Utica Park, and that was one of them, so they may redo it, and if they don't, then maybe we'll look at other alternatives for it, you know?
But it's definitely got to be safe, and that's my main respect.
Right. And also, I had a business owner ask me about downtown, about the trees and how they're basically growing into the buildings and the gutters, et cetera, and if there was anything that the city, if the city's taking a look at that. I didn't, I mean, I like the trees downtown, but then, of course, after it was pointed out to me, I looked up and I thought, oh, well, I see what they're talking about.
Yeah. Well, we didn't budget any money for pruning of the trees this year, it was one of those things that we didn't-
Dave, we can't hear, sorry.
I can't talk over a truck.
I know.
We didn't, we didn't budget any money for pruning of the trees this year, and so it's, it's not in the budget right now.
Okay.
But, you know, if you look at the trees, they're, they're going to need some work. I think Mary may remember, but when those trees were first installed, they were not going to be city maintained, and they slowly have become city maintained, and so I know right now we're going through the pesticide application on them, and trying to kill the aphids on them, aphids, whatever, it's one of the bugs on the trees.
Who was supposed to be maintaining them?
Through a grant, we were going to be doing that, just with- Trees for the Millennium, Millennium was what they were called when we, when we put the trees in, but I don't remember what was supposed to happen after they went in, it was they were supposed to, they weren't supposed to grow as they did, and they weren't supposed to do as they did, they were supposed to be very easy maintenance trees, and as I understand now, those were not the trees to put in downtown, and they are, they have to be maintained by someone, and that's us, so.
So, I did get an arborist report last year to kind of direct us on how to treat the trees, because if they start popping the sidewalk, that means the roots are getting close to the building, so we, we're, the arborist said flat out, just cut them down, cut the roots, make sure you kill the roots. Part of that problem, though, is that's like I tell the crew, is we're not going to cut down a tree unless we're planting another tree, and there's some empty spots down there, so getting that in the back of their head, too, that we'll be planting some trees down there.
Okay. Any else, Joe?
No, nothing here, Scott.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to council reports. Vice, Councilperson Matildee?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Faldor?
Nothing to avoid.
Councilperson Herman?
Oh, I just, it was kind of cute on Sunday, the Girl Scouts, some of the Girl Scouts came down to downtown and washed the garbage cans for the Wild West Fest, the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, so that was very nice, and hopefully, they were hoping to get into the paper, so we'll see if it makes it, that's otherwise, nothing to report.
Councilperson Olivera?
Nothing here, Scott.
Okay. I attended a couple UWPA meetings, and the biggest issue we have is, we were successful, good news, we were successful in getting our Angels Camp power sales through the remap program to basically double our revenue on that, and now we're trying to get the Murphy's Power Plant into the same program, and if, there's a, the, the deal is, if you, if you're a small power plant, three megawatts or less, you can get into this program, we're 3.7, and so we worked out a deal, we thought we had all worked out, where we're going to be okay, just don't produce more than three. PG&E has come in and they're asking us to put some limiting equipment on the, on the power plant, and that's going to cost us money, may cause a delay, but we're still trying to get the January 1st date in, and it's critical, because it's about a $70,000 to $80,000 per month revenue difference to the program, and that's, that's what we use to pay for our water delivery. So, we're dealing with that right now, and our, our staff is doing a great job of staying on top of it and making sure that we're getting everything we can. And also, we just came out of a workshop with the planning commission, and went over trying to, some, went over some guideline, or some general projects that we'd like to see pursued and have a look, and we, along the safety issues, we talked about increasing our water storage, we just saw what happened in Napa and, you know, a flume fire, we've had it here before, and we have a million gallon, open air container that we used to use for water before we built our tower, that's just sitting there dry, so we want to look at, see what, if it's feasible to bring that back, and then we also talked about looking for secondary sources of water, you know, perhaps putting a well down into our mines or something where there's supposed to be water down there. We talked about traffic circulation in the south end of town, that accident with the steamroller, with the car machine, that really showed us that we, we needed some extra access, our, our, we couldn't get emergency crews through there, we couldn't react to an emergency because we couldn't get, literally get through, it was a one-lane highway for quite a while, so we are looking at that. And we also looked at, at possibly using some of our easements we have on Sierra Lane, maybe Moxie, to create some kind of a golf cart circulation through town, try to bring some of the world mark folks more easily downtown, perhaps support our restaurants and, and shops, especially when the bar opens up, that kind of thing, so try to, try to bring some more activity downtown. And I think that was basically what we discussed, other than the housekeeping, part of just staying compliant with our general plan, and that's, that's it for me. Okay, I'd like to open up now for public comment, and the portion of the media is reserved for people wanting to discuss or address the council on any item that's not on the agenda, and please limit any comments to about three minutes, and the state law prohibits, prohibits us from acting on anything brought up that's not agendized.
Ann Forrest, 1545 Triumph Road, and I'm here as a, excuse me, a board member of the Angels Camp Business Association, I just thought I'd bring you up to date, on Friday there was a group of about eight citizens who convened downtown and replanted and cleaned up the 56 barrels down there. We had about 33 of the barrels sponsored, and we're working on getting the rest to help us pay for that, because we don't have the money to do that from dues, but we also want to give thanks to Blooms and Things and to Cal Lumber, they passed their, the products that we bought from them, the flowers and the soil and stuff onto us at cost, and so it was a big help in terms of keeping, and that allowed us to, to clean up all the barrels as opposed to just the ones that were sponsored. And then on Monday, yesterday morning, some of you may have noticed, there were three of your businesspeople downtown, stem cleaning the sidewalks for the benefit of the city, Jim Turner, who owns Turner's Wild West, Duane Garcia, who is the vice president of the Bank of Stockton, and then Penny Smalling, who is working for me, and they did stem clean the sidewalks and tried to get all the gunk from the trees, the aphids in the trees, off the, off the road, too. So, and we are hoping that by Saturday, most of the businesses downtown will have washed their windows inside and out, so that we have a good presentation for the Wild West Fest.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kristy Reisman, Finnegan Lane, Angels Camp. I'm here as a representative for the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention. The cards that you're looking at are announcing a screening that the Alliance in conjunction with Calaveras Public Health, Behavioral Health, and the County Office of Education are putting on. Most people don't know this, there were four opioid overdose deaths in Calaveras County in 2016. That puts us per capita among the highest in the state in opioid overdose deaths. Our population is roughly 44,000 people, in 2016, there were 53,872 prescriptions for opioids written in Calaveras County alone. There are a lot of sites to this issue, there is a lot of depth to it. The presentation that we're putting on includes a screening of a short documentary, about 50 minutes long, that was produced by the FBI, talking about opioid addiction. It is something that could happen to anyone and does unfortunately happen to people that aren't necessarily at risk. There's other people in danger, people who are legitimately prescribed them, don't realize that they actually have to have them secure in a cabinet, because they can be stolen by relatives or people walking in their house. The presentation that we're putting on is going to include experts in the health field, it's also going to include experts there on site, if someone needs help right then, they could actually approach someone to talk about getting help for their addiction. What we would like to see is leaders in the community really come out and support this. It's really important for a lot of the people who, you know, may start out with some sort of a physical ailment and, or need a surgery or something like that, and suddenly find themselves in a position of addiction, and they don't quite know where to turn, because this isn't a world that they've really participated in, so it's really important for the leaders in the community to come out and show support for this, so I hope that you do, and I'll leave the press release with you for the minutes.
Thank you, Kristine. That's Tuesday, November 7th, at 5 o'clock at the San Andreas, or the Calaveras Performing Arts Center in San Andreas. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Debbie Pawnee, and I'm a volunteer, working with the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, and I'm currently co-chair, and I serve this responsibility with Ann Forrest. This weekend is Angels Camp opportunity to beat every other community in Calaveras County and having a wonderful event. Our Mark Twain Wild West Fest will happen Saturday, from the hours of 10 to 5, in downtown Angels Camp, and I could go on about this event, because there are many wonderful things happening, but I think what's most important is to show what kind of community support we have for this particular event. So, we have about 66 vendors, that would be downtown, various class, food and beverage vendors, we have 15 downtown businesses that are participating with a sidewalk sale of sorts, we have 23 vendors in our Gold Rush Village, which is a kids' interactive village, and we are working in conjunction with Columbia State Park in providing many of these interactive activities. We have a ticket sales, we're raffling off six Pure Gold Nuggets, it's, they're 22, 24 carats, and they're on display at Firefall Jewelers, which was one of our very nice sponsors, putting them on display and helping us sell tickets, and most importantly, this event would not go on if we didn't have the contributions from many of our businesses, so I'm going to use my next two and a half minutes and rattle them off. We have $10,000 in in-kind services, we have $11,500 related to the TOT tax that gets collected here in Angels Camp, and to date, we have $8,500 in cash from various businesses with another $5,000 to $6,000 promised. We have a prospector category for our donors, this is a $249 or less donation, there's either in-kind or cash. We have Mike and Jolene Segali, Black Irish Band, Dennis Pawnee and Jamie Reimer, Angels Food Market, Calaveras County Fairgrounds, The Salon, Barolio and Kowchek Family, Bret Hart High School, Catholic Church, St. Patrick's Catholic Church, Union Congregational Church, Stories and Stones, Alpine Landscaping, Darby Plumbing, First Impressions Dentistry, Mike's Pizza, Middleton's, Pinell's Carpet, Booth Swiddle Electric, Turner's Wild West, Signal Service, Danielson Construction. Our next category is what we call the Gold Fever, and this is a donation of $250 to $1,000, whether it be monetary or in-kind. We have the Old West Trio Band, Mark Twain himself, Angels RV Resort, Calaveras Enterprise, Willhurst and Coral Families, Valacito Conservation Camp, Caltrans, Far West Safety Sign, Gold Electric, Firefall Jewelers, Patricia Goenfer, Nash, Nash Chevron Service, Aspen Street Architects, Angels Car Wash, Achanar Block, Angel Sewer and Drain, Calaveras Lumber, Tinko Well Drilling, and Bank of Stockton. Our Lucky Strike sponsors is $1,001 to $2,500, the Richard Willhurst Family in Greenhorn Creek. Our Gold Nugget sponsors is $2,500 to $5,000, Sutton Enterprises, and forgive me, but the Asphalt Plant, and I can't recall their name. And the $5,000 and above is City of Angels, both in the TOT as well as in-kind support services, from our Public Works Fire Department, Police Department, Code Enforcement, Community Development Administration, and most importantly, dear to our heart, the City Council, and cow waste contribution of $5,000 and up. So, we're on a roll, and I hope to see you on Saturday, we would prefer that you come dressed in costume and be ready to howl it up and sing and dance with us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine. They'll be opted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested person may request that any consent items be removed for discussion. And so, they are, we have three items. The first is to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of October 3rd. Second is adopt Resolution 17-36, approving the Police Officers Association MOU. And the third is the permission for the Planning and Billing Director to apply for a sustainable communities grant to construct sidewalks on Highway 49 from State Route 4 to Capella Drive. Does, would anybody like to remove any of those items for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Councilperson Motility, second by Councilperson Herman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item one is the adopt Resolution 17-37, approving a contract with distinctive metals and amending the annual budget for the Raspberry stairs replacement project.
Okay. Basically, what is presented tonight to you is a contract to construct the Raspberry stairs. Now, I'm always a little bit confused about that, because sometimes it's called the Chappelle Stairs, Downtown Stairs. It goes by several names, but right now, it's called the Raspberry Stairs. This space, this project basically started as a minor project, but has evolved to a fairly expensive one. And, as I understand it, this project is very important to the council. However, the project has hit some obstacles.
Move the microphone up a few.
Why is that always happening? Okay. Um, I had to do a little bit of research, because I'm fairly new to the project, but this project's about nine years old. Uh, and that was according to the information I found in the project file. Way back when, I went through the planning process, which had the planning commissioners review the designs and, uh, review a steel or wood design, and they, they chose wood back then. Uh, they, they felt that it matched more the character of the downtown area. But that project also lacked funds. So, it, it basically waited around to more recently, when the project was restarted by the city administrator and assigned to the billing inspector as a special project. About the time the last budget, the, the, the project was switched over, and I got more involved into it. So, that's basically when I, when I came into this process. And it was my understanding that the project budget was based on a preliminary quote, plus a percentage to cover cost overruns. It was figured to use a budget amount of about $50,800. That cost, however, did not include any of the extras or any staff time. Now, the first obstacle that we got was the last, uh, was the proposal that we received from the fabricator, uh, was for $70,472, with many exclusion, exclusions. Now, these exclusions are items that the contractor's not going to provide. These include the traffic control and permit to set up the crane on Main Street, because he's going to fabricate and hole and fly it into position. Uh, some excavation of the footings and removing the dirt from the site. All inspections, surveying, um, routing to level the base plates, some sort of installation of ledger bolts. While that's a lot of work to exclude, we can break it down and get a cost estimate and, and use a lot of the public works crew, staff time, and we could probably get that exclusion cost of about $6,800. So, overall, the project that's presented is closer to $80,000 in total cost, especially when consider there's going to be many extra, there, there's a chance of extra items. On, to make myself familiar with the project, I went over what we actually did. This project was designed by a local architect and a local engineer. And at the rates they charged us, it was pretty much a gift to the city. They were just so expen, inexpensive. This particular design was reviewed in-house, then went through a design review by the Planning Commission. And then later, because the old stairs were unsafe, we had them removed by the prison crew. Uh, a little bit later, the prisoners came back to start digging the footings, and they stopped when they hit the hard rock. Some of the other activity, that there's been coordination with the local owners of adjacent buildings. They plan on putting an outside freezer under the stairs. Uh, we have to provide access to the air conditioners and the, and the electrical meters, and there's an upstairs door. Um, when I became involved in the project, the first thing I did was ask for the project to be re-quoted. There was only one quote, and it was fairly expensive, and so I was uncomfortable with the price. Uh, we sent the set of plans to three other fabricators, and we didn't receive a single response. So, without a comparison and trying to meet the council requirements, we then asked for a final proposal from the fabricator, and that's what we're reviewing tonight. Kind of a little bit of a stumbling block for us, even though that's a city project, the city must follow city rules. We go through the Planning Commission, and we also have to follow purchasing rules. So, we have a, uh, sort of procedures we have to follow when we get to a certain expense. But seeing as the, the project's kind of at a stumbling block right now, I, I looked at several options. One is, the very first option is that we can't award the contract as it is. Uh, that, if, if that's what the council so desires. If we want to look elsewhere, we can look, we, you know, if we want to look elsewhere other than awarding, we can decide if we want to stick with the steel design that we have, or try for a wooden staircase. Originally, the steel was decided upon, I think, was because of the, its longevity. It was going to last a long, long time, we'd never have to look at it again. But the wood design might be more, it might be prudent to look for a cheaper cost. Uh, the second decision is time. If we go for redesign, we start the whole process all over again. We would have to go through a design review, through the Planning Commission again, have to get, get a design from an architect or, or an engineer, and go through the review. So, the, the third thing is, if we keep the design we have, we can also send the plans out again, uh, go for a third, uh, bidding process. Unfortunately, because of the purchasing rules, when we first started this project, we could do it through quotes, but at $70,000, we're going to have to go through an informal bidding process, which means develop a set of plans, specs, go to plan rooms, and advertise it. That's just because this cost, this project has grown so greatly in cost. Other, uh, options that we can do, we can use the same steel design, and we could split the project up, you know, where it's give a, contract out for somebody to do the footings and somebody else to do the stairs. What this does is, uh, it gives the contractors a little bit more confidence. This is quite a large project. And it also gets, uh, gets them a little bit more confidence, because they don't have the full $70,000 out waiting for reimbursement from the city. This project, because it's a city, um, will still have to pay prevailing wages. That's always the biggest stumbling block over any small projects like this. So, the other option is we, if we, well, the last option, if we go for redesign, then we're going to have to decide on the look and feel of the, the stairs. Basically, it, we don't want it to look like a sore thumb sticking out like a sore thumb down, downtown. And lastly, uh, real minor issue, but if the, if we go for wood design, then our footings that we already dug are in the wrong spots. So, in summary, the only way to meet the council schedule is basically to award the project. However, this project is, is very expensive, and if I had my druthers, I'd, I'd rather try to bring the cost down by either splitting the project up or looking at another design. And that's all I have on this project.
Okay.
Uh, but one thing I'll say, since I haven't had a chance to talk to Dave, is that I had talked to Council Member Follandorf regarding, um, different funds than the funds that we have, is that COG.
Oh, yes.
COG has, um, Director, Executive Director Amber Collins. I spoke with her, and she said that there is a possibility that they can move some unused COG funds, about approximately $80,000. I think it's RSTP funds, I could be mistaken. And they could be used for this project, if, if it's put on the call for projects. And, uh, the problem, a problem with that is when the COG does a call for projects, they do priority projects. So, it could be pulled from that, depending, I don't know who pulls it. I mean, you guys would have to tell me, it's either the COG Board and, and they, the city submits calls for projects, and so there's the county, and I think the COG Board goes through them, and they decide which ones are priorities. This, with that $80,000, could be put on for the stairs. Won't be done right away, it'll be, they're going to do that in the next two months or three months, they're going to do the call for projects. That can go on there, that $80,000 can be used for the metal staircase. It's just, I don't know what it takes to pull it or keep it in there and what the criteria is, but that was told to me by Amber. So, there is that alternative also.
Well, no, in the past, it, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, it was on a call, call of the project, so I'm kind of actually shocked that it was rem.
It was removed. It was there several years ago, and it was removed. I know Dave Hannan knows that better, but, uh, it was on there, and it was bumped, because it was not a priority at that point. So, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what the criteria is.
Bumped by whom?
The COG Board.
The COG Director at that time.
Right.
And she wasn't willing to support it, because it wasn't ADA accessible. We had tried for that funding earlier, and I forgot to put that in the report.
The steel staircase that's designed now is ADA compliant?
No, it's stairs.
It's not, because of stairs?
Yes.
But as my understanding is, if we show where there's another ADA accessed, i.e., let's use the visitor's center, for example, and we put two more location, two more spot that are handicap accessible, we can meet that ADA compliance. So, I don't know, you get.
How, wait, how, how do you do that?
You just paint the, just paint another, another two, I don't know what it is, another parking spot, just paint it with a handicap, and then we can, so that we complied with ADA compliance.
Right, because it is a parking lot, going up to a parking lot, by providing them with two additional ADA compliant ones within the city there, then we meet their criteria, and we don't have to make the stairs ADA compliant.
Yeah.
I, I'm just using that location as an example, but we can find, it could be in the horseshoe, we could, there's ways to, to, uh, mediate, I believe, mediate that.
So, it sounds like either way, that's a, a significant delay.
It will be delayed, because it has to wait for the call for projects, and then we just...
And I know when, when it's decided to go with the steel versus the wood, one of the reasons was, yeah, longevity, um, that was, the price difference wasn't that great. I think it was, um, you know, 35 to 50,000 difference, or something like that. And, uh, I don't, I don't quite understand why we're not getting, the project's not that big, it's a staircase.
Yeah.
And so, I, I just, um, I think for, if, I think trying for the COG money, that might be a way to justify the extras, the extra expense, but meanwhile, I think we need to look at the wooden option. Because I do agree that that would look more in line with our, with, with, you know, look and feel. Um, I don't know what the look and feel of, um, metal stairs looks like. I haven't seen any photos. Um, so, I'm inclined to, to look at a different option.
My question is, if we do look at the wooden, how long before we get a design, and how long would, after we get a design, would it take to build it? I mean, we're, we're talking about delays or way, but I'm just curious.
Well, my question too, also, if you can answer it with me, is maintenance. How are we going to upkeep the maintenance for these metal, too?
Well, and I can kind of give you a, a heads up, the reason why I came up, because when the Planning Commission adopted the wood stairs, we were, we were going to be specially treating the wood. Uh, there was some special treated wood. I know at the time, Chair Colletto, uh, gave us an example of a type of wood that would last for a long period of time. Uh, and so, that's why they went with the wood. And then we would, there were some patina, doing some patina on the rails to kind of make them last. Uh, and there were some treatments that they knew about, that we, and that's why we got the estimate of $35,000, when we, when we did, 35, 40,000, we did the wood. Because it had these specially treated wood, these, the handles and that kind of stuff. We have a design, so if you wanted, I could bring back that design, instead of having to do a whole, brand-new wood design. We've, uh, there's not too many things you can do with that staircase, uh, design-wise. So, I mean, we have the design, so if that's something that we want to go back to, I can give it to Dave, and he can print that out or do whatever.
Is it a fully designed or just a schematic?
Well, it's, it's a schematic. I mean, it was, it didn't have the full bid, quote, bid package, but at least it, it called out all the materials, it called out, uh, what it needed, that should be, that should have been in the file, so.
Well, the only thing in the file was a trestle-type design, to make it look like a railroad bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, wasn't it?
Okay, sorry about that.
I have a question. Now, we had funded some of this, but it's come up beyond what we had put aside. How much is this beyond what we had?
I think it's about $30,000.
$30,000. So, it's an extra $30,000. Have we any other source for that $30,000?
Not unless it's, no.
No.
Julius is here.
I don't think so. I didn't hear you say no.
No.
Thanks.
We had originally discussed that it was coming from the relinquishment funds. The relinquishment funds can absorb this as well. We also talked in budget about substituting TOT money for the relinquishment money, if we found that we had more there than we thought we were going to have. I've closed the books for last year. We don't. Um, I projected about $17,000 coming forward in TOT, and it came in about $19,000. So, I, unless something significantly changes this year in the TOT, I don't expect to have enough money in TOT to cover it. It probably will come from relinquishment funds, if we do it internally.
And it can come from the relinquishment funds? We do have that?
I have a question.
I would prefer just doing it.
I have a question in regards to a plan that, uh, was, you said there was a plan for a wood structure?
Yes.
With some metal?
For the railings, yeah.
The, so the treated wood, you said, would be good for?
You know, about, you know, anywhere between.
A number of years?
Yeah, it'd be a number of years.
What are we looking at? I mean, it, you know, five to 30?
I, I, I would say, no, I would say probably in the neighborhood of 15, 15 to 20.
15 to 20 years?
That's what was told to us.
And did we get an, even a roundabout estimate for, at that?
At that time, of course, that was, what, 2010? So, that estimate was about, that was about 37, 37.5, to do that. So, you know, depending on inflation, depending on where, uh, where it is, probably in the 45 to 50, I'll just say, you know, conservative 55, 50.
Would COG might be available for that? If it's not steel? In regards to the steel structure, I do have some questions, because we have hot summers, and we have cold winters. So, when it's hot, and I want to put my hand on a handrail of a side, of a, of a staircase, and it's steel, I'm wondering, how hot is that steel going to be? And in the winter, how, I mean, I might have gloves on, but maybe not.
Both options have, excuse me, both options had a steel handrail. The reason why is, is, is if you have a wooden handrail, people get slivers around their hands over it, so they always just go straight to steel.
Okay. Is it coated with anything, so it's not going to brand my hand?
At the most, at, uh, the present steel design was going to be erected unpainted steel.
Okay.
That was going to be allowed to rust for a few years, and then you're going to put a seal coat over it. The seal coat would probably take a little bit of maintenance, but that's still not much. I mean, you're, you're rubbing your hands over it, it will, will polish it. The seal coat won't help, the signal, won't protect you, and this, the rust won't protect you.
Now, would the wooden and steel both ice up in the wintertime about the same, or the, was there, was there some kind of tread, or how are you going to deal with ice issues?
Well, on the steel design, what we were going to do is put wooden treads on the walkway portion, and then, then concrete treads on the stairs themselves. That way, you know, if, if there ever was ice, and we salt, the, the wood would not need salting, or if it does, it, it's, it's not going to need much. The stairs can be salted regularly.
So, we still have wood, even on the steel staircase?
Mm-hmm.
Though it has to be maintained and...
Yeah.
I thought it would have that. You know how you punch the hole, and it has kind of a prong? In steel?
On the, on the, on the treads of the stairs?
Yeah, for the tread, for the steel staircase.
No, the design has concrete, big cast concrete stair treads.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to get more information. I hate, I, I want to see this project go through as quickly as possible, as much as anybody, but I can't justify the increase in money, especially since we don't have it. Um, and if we can get COG to come up with it, that's great, let's move forward, but if we can't, um, while we're investigating the COG route, I guess they'll, they'll go whether it's wood or, or metal, so let's, let's look into getting a, a bid on the, based on the designs that we already have. That shouldn't take that long. And let's see what we can do.
And I'm, I'm just curious, as since Dave said that, um, the Director of COG sort of pulled it off, I'm just curious what, what, how that works at COG, I mean, if you guys could let me know, the COG reps could let me know how, when you do a call for projects, how do you keep it on? Like, if you guys put it on, how are you going to say leave that on?
Bringing it back to council, and council tells the COG representatives whether or not it stays on or off that list, as well as what money has become available as well, and is, at that time, and then it readjustes through the project. So, it's a combination of multiple factors. So, it's a multiple of a county saying, "No, we decided not to do this," or a city, "No, we decided not to do this," as well as the available funds. as well as the available funds that have come through during that time with the call of projects. So I'll let them.
I mean, the, the project didn't make it because of the criteria of the project. The other projects rose to the top and that one fell out. So.
We're just, okay.
So that's why, when we were going through the call for projects, you know, all of our sidewalk projects and their mountain ranch rail project, or shoulder project, and some of the other projects rose to the top where this one kind of lagged on the bottom and the justification. We probably could have done a better job on the justification, but it just didn't, it didn't fathom. But if there are monies available through the existing call of projects and not the new call of projects, that's something that we would have to talk to Amber about.
Existing and also I guess.
And we just have to make sure the council, keep that on the radar.
Well, I think maybe more, more to you because Amber is aware how much we want this. I mean, this is sort of embarrassing since I worked there for ten years, but. On the call, but yeah, but since Amber's.
And I feel too, if we're able to get it through, I mean, not just more money that now is going back into the roads project. You know, so it kind of, we can off, keep some of that money in our pockets for other projects that they've been bugging us about.
Yeah, I'm really reluctant to take any money away from our roads because those are. We need, we need work on those. Joe, you have any comments?
Just curious about whether Dave has gone, how far he's gone in search of a vendor for this. You know, down into the valley, over to the Bay Area, is that the side of the question? Or is it possible we could get a competitive bid from a bigger firm?
We used, I contacted the fabricators, we used for the area digester at the wastewater treatment plant. And then the fabricator we did for putting the handrail up outside the shopping center. What's the name of that shopping center? And then we picked one local, just out of the blue. And so the two before, we're always interested in doing work here. And they, of course, this time of the year, or this, this season is very hard to get contractors. They must be busy. That's why I put in, when I was discussing about re- quoting this project, it can change in a heartbeat and somebody's more interested in this work. But those are the three that we chose.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So would it make sense then to kind of take a more of a shotgun approach? Send out, try harder to get somebody, a steel fabricator to bid that as well? But really, bid the wood design? Do both?
Do both.
Well, you got both designs. It's a matter of putting them out for bid and trying to get, you know, more options.
Yeah, I'm gonna go after, I'm gonna have to find Dave's design, see if that's got enough of a design to bid. If not, then we'll have to fill in the holes. But yeah, we can, we can do a shotgun approach.
And I think we should still also put it on the call for project for cog and go that route just so it can save the city money. So if we can get the money from cog and it's only two months difference between, we waited this long. I, I think we can wait some more if that's gonna save us money in our budget.
Okay.
Is there any comment from anybody in the public about this issue? Herman?
I didn't know I was gonna say anything, but. These stairs are quite a thing. I know that everybody in the future says that that parking lot is gonna be the number one source for parking for the city. When the wooden stairs were there, I know there's twenty-two stairs of wood, then the concrete thing, and then four stairs to the upper. I looked at, looking at bringing a cable car like they have down at Capitola. It won't work because we can't get side entrance. We can't work because you have to have a front entrance and a back, so a cable car won't work. The only thing is gonna use, people are gonna use that thing if there's an escalator. Anything you can put it for twenty-five cents and you have it going each way. I don't think that those stairs are gonna justify any amount of money put in because people aren't gonna use them. They're not, they weren't using them when they were wood. People are too fat and lazy, including myself, to use those stairs. And I don't think that they're gonna be used. I wouldn't put a penny into them. I would put some money aside every year and put an escalator in. I guarantee an escalator will utilize that parking lot. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I wonder about looking into an escalator situation. I think he's right about the people using, and there's just a lot of stairs going up and down, but.
That wouldn't really fit the look and feel of downtown.
Yeah, but, I know, but the look and feel versus.
You have a covered one, like a glass cover on it or something?
The look and feel versus the, the people using it even. What good is that parking lot if no one?
I think if we have wayfinding and we have stairs with an arrow, people are gonna be using them quite a bit. I mean, I'm.
And we still have a main street master plan, so we can't, I mean, it don't, you know, plan to be utilized. So regardless of what it is being used, we still have to go by them.
No, let's get us, let's get something.
All right, so does anybody want to put a motion forward?
I'll move to explore the, trying to find more bids. And are we going to try for the metal and the wood? Or just metal? And then to include also putting it out to cog and keeping it up at the top.
I'd like to see us look for bids on both metal and wood so that when we get them, we can compare and make sense of them. So I don't want, you know, this is not a standalone. So, so if I understood that motion right, it was to put out for bid for the wooden design as well as further bids for the current metal design and also pursue cog funding.
Correct.
At the same time. Does anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
I have a question then. Dave, if the wood does not have the design sufficient, do we have to pay for someone then to design the wood? Or can we do something with the in-house?
I was debating about that in-house. It's been about ten years since I did any good wood design. And so I was debating that, if I'm gonna be, I could probably do the main structural members, the connections, I could probably figure it out. So I'll have to take a look to see what's going on with the schematic and see how far along it is. And then maybe have to go out to, out to bid, to contract for the engineering.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilperson Motilby, seconded by Councilperson Olivera. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes five oh. Hopefully we'll get something we can live with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number two is to request that Bret Hart High School remove the fill dirt over the city water main. Dave?
I get to bring you all the good news tonight. So what is presented tonight is a request to Bret Hart High School to remove the fill dirt over city water main.
I'm having, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. So what is presented tonight is a request to, to Bret Hart High School to remove fill dirt, fill dirt over city water main. And I go to read my notes, the microphone's right in the way. The Bret Hart School purchased a piece of property for their use in their agriculture program. And the property's located outside the city and would normally be of no concern to the city except that we have a major water line crossing the property. The school was creating a level pad on the site by grading and filling and they filled over the city water main by mistake. Staff discovered the issue and, and so we met out there with some of the school staff. With our, the problem with the increased depth of fill over the, over the water main is that it's beyond our limits to maintain. As you all saw today, we had a broken water main out on Stockton. And this is, this, the main up on, on this property is asbestos concrete pipe, just like it was on Stockton. And it's about up to age where they suddenly burst. This, back to my notes, the school though, has some good plans for the site. And so we discussed, discussed if there was any possible way, possible way to relocate the water line. We wouldn't be relocating the water line at the existing size because basically we don't have the funds for it. And, and besides, the pipe is undersized. But we do have some, we do have some capacity funds that we could use if we upsize the pipe as part of the improvements that are listed in the water master plan. The only difficulty I have with that is that we're start, starting working on the first phase of the projects in the water master plan that's upsizing the pipes in the second phase. So we'd have to advance the project. The pipe though, is a needed project. And if the council wishes to advance the project, it's possible. From a cost standpoint, it's cheaper to have the school move the dirt. But if we install a new water line, it's probably about three hundred and fifty-five thousand, according to the master plan. If the city was to replace the pipe during a normal schedule, like when we were going through our project, it probably won't have to be replaced for another ten to fifteen years. As a manager of the, the water department, my, my recommendation is to remove the fill. But as, I'm also, as a relation between the city and the school, that, that's something that I brought up to you guys. And so basically, that's all I have.
Does anybody in the public have a comment about that? I guessed as much.
Good evening. I'm Michael Chennick, Superintendent Bret Hart, Newland High School District. And just want to talk about the timeline for this project. And it is not my intent to throw anybody under the bus. But there was, on numerous attempts, we contacted, starting when we built the fence. If you notice, there's a new fence down that line. I had our contractor, USA the property, and the comment back from the city was, don't do it on a Saturday if you take clothes because, well, I'm not gonna be here to fix the line. So at one point, the line was, they thought the water line was along the fence line. When we put power out to the property, again, we USA'd, we were told by the city, we're not sure where the water line is. So we took it upon ourselves to move the pole twenty feet in, hoping that we wouldn't hit the water line. Because at that point, after the second attempt to identify where the line was, they couldn't identify the line. As Dave mentioned, a meeting was held out there with the city and our contractors and discussion occurred about where the location of the line was. At this point, the project hadn't finished. I let, as Mary does, I let my staff take care of that. But it was reported back to me, there was a question about the easement. Was there an easement and who owned the easement? So after researching the title, I came up with that PGU had the easement originally. And I called Dave that day and I said, you know, Dave, I don't see the City of Angels on this easement. I see, you know, Pacific Gas and Electric Water Company. And he shared with me that the easement was purchased, or the water system was purchased. And, but I questioned, why didn't you then record the deed so that if you, when the property sold, you would see that it wasn't Pacific Gas and Electric any longer, it was City of Angels. After the meeting, the city crew went out and they tried, I don't know how many hours they spent. They tried to determine where the line was. I left it with Dave. I said, now you give me direction. I'm not gonna finish the project. I won't, I'll, I'll move the toe of the hill. But I don't know where the line is and at this point, you folks don't know where the line is. And I was told, it was okay, Mike, you finish the project and we'll kind of deal with what happens afterwards. And now we have this agenda item. So I'm asking the council, as we've had in the past, to continue having the kind of relationship that a district and a city should always be proud of. I mean, a few years ago, when fireworks became an issue at Yidda Park, we came together and said, you know, let's do fireworks in the upper parking lot in the sports complex. And that's worked out beautifully. So what I'm asking is, first of all, I don't think they know where the line is. And so, first of all, that line has to be found and discovered so that we actually know where that line is. And second, I'm willing to take it on as a compromise position that if that line breaks and if that fill dirt is over that line, then the district will help compensate and find the line for the, for the city. I don't know if you folks have any questions or?
I might, the question that strikes me is, they're asking us to approve or having asked Bret Hart to remove the fill dirt over city water main. We don't know where the water main is. How can we ask him to remove dirt over someplace that we don't know?
Exactly.
So that's, someone like to address that?
Yeah, this is old asbestos concrete pipe and it's got a little bit of a wobble. It can be bent a little bit at the joints. And we're pretty sure where it's at. We just haven't found it. And we're within five feet of it.
Can I suggest we find the pipe before we bring this to us?
Well, it is, except that there is an option that I had to bring to you is that possibly relocating the water line. Now, the reason I said that was because the school does have some good plans for out there on their, their agriculture center. That kind of horse trading is not, not within my, my job description. I just wanted to make sure that it was, or brought, bring it up to you that that's the possibility. Then we'll just leave the pipe where it's at and start looking at, at relocating the water line. So that's kind of a decision point. I flip back and forth on way, way to present this to you. This is the way I ended up with it.
Wow. By the way. I guess my comment would, would be in this case, I don't know, we don't have nearly enough information to justify a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense or moving up something ten or fifteen year. Replaces something that has a ten or fifteen year life still. We don't have that information. We don't know where the line is. For all we know, they might be able to finish the project and not be over our line.
They're definitely over the line.
Okay.
There's, there's no problem there. There's two valves there. We can, if we went straight line in between them, they're, they're definitely way over the line. But we have a feeling that it kind of curves around and so they're only partly over the line.
Okay.
Where like he said, like Michael said, the toe of the, the slope was more with that.
And I think maybe we can sit down and discuss what if there is a line break and what the district would, we want to come, you know, we can put maybe an agreement together that might be a good compromise at this time.
The, the problem with the line break, at an eight inch one at the bottom of the hill like that, we'd probably empty the water tank in a couple hours and be without water. It's, it's not a question of running up and just shutting valves off. We would be out of control on that one.
How deep is this line buried?
We're about four feet deep for the natural ground. And where we think of that, they added about eight foot of fill over it. So we're at twelve foot, which means we'd have to bring in a large excavator and shielding to go that deep.
Do we know where it begins and ends? And why I ask that is while we're trying to figure out where the line is through that dirt, if we know where it ends, can we cap that? If it's, if that's the only thing it's going to, can we cap that end? Because if you're suggesting that we're gonna have to remove it, we're gonna have to cap it somewhere. So can we cap it in the meantime and then go from there and figure out where this, where the lines are? I mean, if you're worried about a break underneath the dirt.
We can't cap it right now because there's only two lines that feed the city's distribution system. This is one of them.
I, I don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision on this at all. I feel like this is something maybe we, we need to sit down, maybe our city attorney needs to sit down with the high school to figure something out.
Hey Scott, let, can we interject something?
Sure.
I couldn't hear anything that was being said, but the easement thing bothers me a little bit. The pipe runs all the way down the hill from the treatment plant. The easement must follow it, so therefore there's other properties in play. As a side item, that easement and the title ought to be researched and rectified. You know, as a side item to this.
Yeah, the easement should, should show measurements on a flat map. There should be a map. And easements.
No, I had the title company pull the, the piece of property and research our, our easement on there. And it's mainly just a description. It says that there is a water line that crosses and allows you to access, to come in and maintain it. There's no description that we, of any, any.
How do, how does one locate a pipe like that that's four to twelve feet underground?
You start digging. And these guys, because of the lack of a backhoe, are digging by the excavator, the hydro vac.
How much would it cost to find that pipe?
We roughly chart, when we get somebody to come in and help us out, it's roughly four grand a day. And so what they've been doing is in between projects is going out there and they haven't been back the last week.
How much extra time would it take to access the pipe if it breaks under twelve feet versus four feet of dirt?
Well, we'd have to find a contractor with an excavator, get them on site, so that's a couple hours right there. By that time, we'd be in hurt with the providing water to the city.
How long would it take to drain the tank?
There's two and a half million gallons in the tank and we're roughly about a half million gallons at an unbroken pipe. Now, if it's only a pipe that, that says springs a leak and a small leak, then it's gonna be a different rate.
Is there a turn off at the tank?
There's a turn off up the hill. And if we find it, then that's, that's, that'll save some time.
Here's what I'm thinking, if there's a, if there's a pipe break, then breaks a middle of night or breaks on Sunday or whatever it is, a couple hours isn't gonna make a difference. If we can't get to the shut off valve, that tank's, that tank's gonna be empty anyway.
Right. So where we get is, we get into response time. And so if we can't respond in time and it's a total break, these are all scenarios.
Right. Right.
If it's only a small break, we could probably get into a time to shut the valve off. If it's a large break, we're in trouble. And one of the worries we had was, because of the equipment they used to move the dirt over there, was large. And this, like I said earlier, this pipe now breaks at this age. And so, what we told the school staff, "You haven't broken it yet, but don't run over it." And so, what they did was, they finished up the erosion patrol out there, just so when the rains come, they don't lose all the dirt. But they haven't been moving equipment over it, so they've been very cooperative.
Is this, are there any time constraints we're dealing with here? We have time to sit down, negotiate this, or figure this out?
We got time.
I'd like to see if we can come to some kind of an agreement. Because I'm thinking that, I'm not sure that 12 feet or four feet of dirt matters in the event of a break. It'd be unusual if it did, if that two hours actually came into play. That means you found out about the break right away, and you're able to get on it right now. And...
It does come into play. Remember, a couple of years ago, we had that deep freeze where we broke a pipeline out at the spray field. It took us two days to find it.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah.
That's my point. So, two days and two hours are two days. That's kind of my point, is I'm not sure that extra two hours is going to matter that much.
Yeah, probably the first thing we'll do is, we'll start getting phone calls from people without water.
Yeah. So, that's my point.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's no description of the location in the easement?
No. You know, it's funny...
Then what easement am I reading? Because it shows a description of where it is in the northeast section of the property. So, if we was to map that easement to where the pipe is, especially if we're using it for our water master plan, how are we, not knowing where our stuff is?
Okay. Right, they do have a description of the line. Right.
I mean, I think we should do what Scott says.
Does it say a certain feet from a certain corner? Is it, can a surveyor use that description and draw a paint line?
Yeah, and I got to backtrack a little bit on that, because what I look for on an easement is a width. So, with the width.
Right.
So, if you do like a center line, it doesn't really tell me how much rights we have to the property. So, if I have a 12 foot wide piece of equipment, they only got two foot width, you know, that type of thing.
I mean, a lot of property descriptions are in meets and balance, and they say, "Start at this point, go over this way, this way," and they describe it. So, can we get a surveyor, perhaps the district could have a surveyor come out and try to locate the line based on the easement?
Sure.
And maybe we can start, maybe we can start digging a little bit and see if we hit a pipe.
What we started, when we met with them out there, what we decided to do was, was to try to excavate and find the pipe next to the fill. Because that really does tell the story of whether or not they've affected the pipe, or how much dirt would have to be moved. And so, the crews were out there digging by, like I said, the hydro excavator, which is basically just shooting water line down the ground and using the big vacuum we have to suck up the dirt. And after about five or six holes, you know, of hard digging, they didn't find it. And that's kind of, you know, we've talked about this before, is why that water line's even on that property. It's pretty far out of the road. It's in the way of their use of the property, except back then, the property was mainly probably just cattle. But if the school's going to use it for different purposes, we're probably going to end up in a conflict. They have some ideas, some plans and structures they want to put up there, and this easement would eventually change their design.
No, I guess what I'm thinking is, and I'm thinking about, but if we're going to put in a new pipe, you know, relocate a pipe in, say, 10 or 15 years. So, we have 10 or 15 years to worry about this. And if the district is willing to step up and help us take care of any leaks, if we've already kind of figured out that the two hour difference probably won't make a difference, then it seems to me something can be worked out for that amount of time.
We can work out some sort of arrangement if you, but the threat on that is, like I said, is that if we do have a break, we're not going to control it very well.
We do have some assurances that there won't be any structure over this, right?
At this point, we can't place a structure.
This is Michael Schmenti again. At this point, we can't place any structure until we locate the pipe. Obviously, I'm not going to put a building over a water line, just like I wouldn't have finished the toe of this hill if we could have identified where the water line is. I mean, now, we have to work cooperatively, because we have, the project was finished. So, I'm willing to, maybe I'm willing to, you know, bear the cost of a surveyor to find it. And if that line isn't under that toe, the city will reimburse the district, right?
Sounds fair enough to me.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
That sounds fair enough.
And...
I don't speak for the city.
I know, but, you know, I, there are two new, and I think this city, the council members, council, can you see members? No. That there are two new connections. You know, there's a new connection at Garden Lane, and when they put the bypass in, there's a new connection. So, the only remaining section, as I understand it, is the pipe that runs down the front of our property. So, you know, whatever we need to do to make this right, we'll help make it right.
Okay, let's work a little harder on coming up with a solution before we do anything here. Does that sound reasonable there, Brad?
Yeah, for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we don't need a motion?
Well, what do you really want? To be with the school, Dave, and myself?
Get a certificate?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to take Mr. Schmenti up on his offer to bring a surveyor out there. And personally, I like his, I like the take. If it turns out that the pipe is not under the work that they've done, then we paid for the survey. Money well spent. And if it is, he pays for the survey, and then we figure out what to do from there.
I just have one more question.
Set. Okay.
I'll contact Gary Dever tomorrow morning, but he's going to need a starting point. So, do we happen to know a starting point with coordinates, so he can plot this thing out?
I haven't seen easement, but we do, Dave's nodding, he's nodding, he's had mine.
Okay. So, if you could send that to me?
It's the same one on your title report, so...
It doesn't, okay. Well, I'll share. I'll share it with, I'll share it with Gary, and we'll do it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
I got an extra copy right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just that direction?
So, that's direction. So, we're gonna, is that?
Yeah. The school's going to go out and have a surveyor do this, and then let us know what's going on. We'll bring this back with the results, and...
And if that pipe is not underneath the fill, it's our dime?
Yes. As long as you guys agree, I'll do that.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it back once it's done.
Gary's good. Keep it close.
Okay. Thank you. All right, item number three.
Right.
Request for direction regarding ordinance, ordinances to be drafted regarding marijuana land uses. Derek Cole.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, I am requesting direction from you as to what, if anything, to bring back on the subject of marijuana. We've had two workshops, and I actually do intend to have a variety of us present more information to you tonight. And I apologize, this was not all sort of put together in writing, but we will provide answers to many of the questions that were raised at the last workshop, and I'll sort of bring folks up, and I have some things to say. We'll do that in a moment. Basically, I've outlined the subjects in this very short staff report as to what direction I need. What I would like to emphasize is, there's two ways we can do this. And I suspect the second way may be the best way to go. The first way is, you could tonight tell me, "Derek, bring back an ordinance or ordinances that say X, Y, and Z." Recognizing that you're not bound by anything, you don't have any words in front of you, and you would have to consider those pursuant to the two-meeting process that any ordinance requires. Another option would be to do an urgency ordinance, essentially a moratorium, which is clearly authorized by state law. And that can extend for up to two years, and it's a stepped process. I don't think we've ever done one here in this city, but many cities have done them. You adopt an ordinance immediately, it takes effect immediately, and then within 45 days, you have to extend it. And you can extend it for up to, essentially, you get two years. And you can have a waiting period where you can watch how the state progresses, you can consider things further, and you can actually get some experience and see what other cities are going through. The state does plan to start issuing licenses in January, and they are, I mean, it is full steam ahead for them. They are putting everything into being up and running. And so, the moratorium, the beauty of the moratorium is, it doesn't permanently ban you or ban anything if you want to retain flexibility. It basically just says, "We're not going to let anything happen here for this up to two-year period while we study this issue." And one of the benefits is that you can watch what happens once the state starts issuing these licenses. So, that's an option that you have. You don't have to take that option. You can direct me to bring back a permanent ordinance. We do have time, if we do this in our two meetings in November, to have ordinances permanently in place before January 1. So, we have to know concern that the state will start issuing licenses and effectively try to preempt us. So, that's the basics. What I would suggest that I do now is, present some of the information that you had requested at your last meeting, so that you have that. And then, obviously, we have members of the public, so they can provide whatever input, and then bring it back to the council, and we can talk about how to proceed. So, if that's fine, what I would like to do is call a few people up, and I'll give you the order, unless you want a different order.
Derek, can I ask just a question?
Yes.
The moratorium idea means that everything is, as is now, that you just, nothing happens with marijuana here?
Correct.
For the two years.
Yeah, you effectively...
To give your time, some time.
You say, "No one can do anything for this period of time." So, it's effectively a ban, but it's not a permanent ban, and it does have an expiration. And you would have to put a permanent ordinance in place, or else, when it expires, it expires, and it's a free for all.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what I would like to do is, a couple folks, and I'll sort of broadcast. Steve Flag was not able to be here tonight, but one of the main issues the council had is on enforcement. What does it cost? What does it look like doing code enforcement? And so, Dave Hanum would provide information on that issue. And hold on, or is he there? Secondly, you asked questions about the gan limit limitation issues, and are we going to run up against the gan limit if we were to tax marijuana? If we were to allow some marijuana uses and to tax them, would ultimately that put us into a gan limit question or issue? In which case, you know, what benefit do we really get from the taxing? Then we're in an override situation. So, Julie will provide some information on that. Another question that was asked is, do we have any insurance issues? In other words, we have insurance that is provided for all kinds of things that we do, and do we void that insurance? Or do we somehow put ourselves at jeopardy of not being insured if we allow any marijuana uses? And Susan has looked into that issue, and she can speak on that. And then there were some other sort of various and sundry legal questions that were asked, and I'll, maybe at the end of those three presenting their points, then I'll go through some of mine. So, if that's fine, what I would ask is that Dave Hanum come up. He'd be back on the hot seat. And so, Dave would talk again about, in code enforcement, costs, budget issues. I realize we're not dealing with, you know, there's a lot of variables and unknowns at this point, but anyway, Dave.
A lot of variables unknown. Basically, we would handle it, like, right now, the way we handle code enforcement is through nuisance abatement. Chapter two, in chapter two, that's pretty much what we do in terms of code enforcement. So, we would go through the process of if a formal complaint was coming in, they go to the city hall, we would have to make an initial inspection of what that is, of what that inspection is. In this case, I'm just going to use an example of the growing plants outside, and the smell is, I'll just use an odor one. But it could be a number of different issues, but I'll just use that one. We go out there, make the initial inspection, however, based on the fact that in marijuana, in a lot of cases of marijuana, there's a lot of different clientele that aren't necessarily the nicest of people that do it. I'm not saying that's not everybody, but if we're going to a complaint, we would take a police officer with us, only because for two reasons. One is, one is, we don't, Steve doesn't have a citing authority, nor does he have, is he authorized by the penal code to do anything? All of his, all of his powers are associated with chapter two of our municipal code. That's where his code enforcement powers pretty much end and start. So, we would have to, we'd have to use the police department to follow up on any of those types of investigations. Since marijuana is still classified as a class one, that is more of a penal code issue than a code issue, than a code enforcement issue. Because we don't have any codes, except for land use when they do a conditional use permit, we have no other, other type of codes that we would be able to use, except for maybe public health and safety. But that, depending on what the comment is. So, if it's a plant thing, it could be an odor issue, or a sheer number of plants, meaning there's much more than the six they're allowed, then we would probably bring in, we would probably bring in the PD to help us offset that. So, the cost of them coming out as well. Once we inspected it, then what code enforcement does really is, we're kind of like a letter writing campaign. We would write them a letter saying that we've inspected the unit. Yes, you've, you've broken, or you have violated code sections, and we try to state those code sections, which would probably be a public health or a nuisance type of code, at which point, we would, hopefully, they would eradicate, which, then we would inspect again, and again, we would be taking out a police officer, just because these types of things, and what we've been hearing with the county code enforcement, and just going up on some houses, it's not pretty. Some of them are coming up against some guys that are armed, some of them are coming up against, you know, they're coming up against all different scenarios. And my code enforcement officer isn't equipped to handle some of those circumstances that come up. I mean, that's just, that's just part of it. And so, I would be bringing out to the police. Most of these code enforcement issues would probably be turned over to the police as soon as we make the initial, the initial investigation or the initial problem. And then, at that point, we would probably do the letter writing campaign in terms of you must eradicate, or you must take away under a certain period of time, dah 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 dah, pursuant to penal codes that are associated with marijuana at this point. Because we don't have, like I said, we don't have a lot, we don't have a whole, we don't have a framework of codes that deal with this. And we can just go through our nuisance abatement, which I think chapter 2.60, I think, is right around that area. So, in terms of cost, it'd be, our cost would be kind of minimal, it'd be more police costs to help us offset that. In terms of real dollars, I mean, you're talking probably anywhere between, I mean, right now, we handle code enforcement, it takes anywhere between 10 to 20 hours, depending on the case, and some cases take longer. But at Steve's time, at Todd's time, if I have to get involved in my time, or if there's a public health issue with water at Dave's time, however, whoever's got to go, whatever the, whatever that issue is. So, that's, and right now, we don't have a fee structure in place to collect those costs, so we would have to put a fee structure in place, so that we would definitely collect those costs. And the citing authority that we have, I think in the section 2.6, I think is a misdemeanor at best, and I think it's like $100 a day, or 50, 100, 150 a day, as long as the violation stays in effect. So, so that's, that's pretty much in terms of code enforcement. But without additional cost, we would be using the police, just because there are penal codes involved. We don't deal with the penal, our code enforcement doesn't deal with penal code, we just deal with the municipal code. So, unless we put a framework together in that, then we'd be able to do that.
Go ahead, Scott, please. So, that's just the cost of a citizen, an angels camp, having to grow. But what about the cost of people coming in from outside our city and bringing in the marijuana, or, you know, enforcing, the county says, "Go for it, grow your, grow everything, and we want to protect it, we want to keep our city safe." There's that cost as well.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they do allow the grows in the city, or in the county, yeah, bringing it into the city, depending on what they do, I mean, it's my understanding, I mean, residents are allowed to grow their six plants, I mean, that's, that is the law, they are allowed to do that, they can do that already. In terms of bringing, bringing in additional, in most cases, if they were bringing it to the city, we would have some type of either manufacturing or distribution would go into a warehouse in, in industrial area, you wouldn't see it. But it, but there could be issues that, you know, those guys are violating what they're violating. I mean, it's just, it's, but we go on a complaint basis, so it's not, we're not going out looking for it, but if the citizens complain, then we go out and, and address those issues at that point.
Well, looking at like manufacturing, distribution, the lab, so marijuana has to come into the city for something like that, and how would we have enforcement of certain regulations that would be with manufacturing and distribution?
Well, we, we would control under the conditional use permit. We'd control under the land use authority that we have as part of the conditional use permit, they can only do so much, they can only open so mu, I mean, we have, in terms of the land use authority, we have land use authority that can cover those issues in terms of, we can condition the project to be able to do that. So if they're coming into somewhere to either sell it, or, I mean, if they come in to sell by themselves, yeah, that's, that's a penal code, that's, that's a total, that's a Todd deal. But if they're coming, even if they bring it into like a, if the city were to decide to have a, a retail outlet, or like a, you know, ABC store for, for marijuana, then if, if the land use of that shop contained a conditional use permit, then at that point, the city could regulate through its land use authority that they violated their condition of their conditional use permit, we can revoke their permit, revoke their business license if it's conditioned in the permit, and then they're, and then they can no longer operate.
Well, like, looking at the one that we're looking at, that's might be coming in, so how do you know whether illegal growers, cultivators, you know, the marijuana that's coming in, how do you know if it's legal or not?
We don't.
You don't know if it's illegal growers bringing it in?
Nope.
And then there's a cash element, where they have cash and they can't take it to the bank.
Yeah, but those are-
One thing I will say is that there is a seed-to-product program the state will be putting in place, where if it's legal, literally, it's track and trace, basically. You will be able to track from the seed all the way to the final product, and it will tell you everywhere along the way where it came from. So if, you know, if folks are participating in the legal stream of commerce, you should be able to tell that through the track and trace program, once the state is up and running, at least that's the intent. Cashless transactions, that was one of the things, I know you had asked about that, that was one of the things on my list, but I'll go ahead and just mention that now. We could, if we do allow some permissive scheme within the city, we can require that transactions be cashless. That they be, you know, credit card transactions, or that they be handled electronically. So that's it.
But you have to find a bank who will do that, though, don't you? That's, I heard the problem is, because it's federal, you know?
Right, yeah, and that's-
Validating a federal-
Correct, and that's, you know, and that's, that's a lot, that's something a lot of, some cities are basically going to, is just saying, that's not our problem, you go deal with it, we're gonna require it to be cashless.
If, in terms of tracking, if it's tracked, I mean, we can always, we can always put in the conditional use permit, that we can inspect the facility, if, if, we can, we can, we can inspect your records at any time, at any time that we need, that we feel that it's necessary to, because we've either got, we've either gotten complaints, or we've gotten out to see if they are doing illegal things, in which case, then again, the land use authority would come into play, which we have a lot more authority in the land use authority than we do as part of the nuisance abatement's code enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, so we have more control over the land use authority than we do-
Linda.
At this point.
When you asked, how would you know if that product was legal or illegal coming into a lab? I would, I would bet money that only licensed legal grows are going to go into a lab for analysis. The illegal stuff is illegal, they're, they're, they're gonna, they're not gonna want to send their product to a lab.
Well, then you're just saying, they're gonna just keep selling it illegally, and they won't try to sell it legally.
That's, yeah, that's, so, so in terms of code enforcement, so that's why I'm saying, in terms, we have a much, we have a much stronger case with land use authority than we do code enforcement. Any, any type of code enforcement activity, we would, we would, we would, we would call in the police department to handle that.
Okay. So bring Julie up, let. And again, so Julie looked into the issues associated with the gan limit.
I'm gonna say I'm not the expert, I just know some stuff, so please don't take me as the expert. I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on the cost issue, because I did a little bit of research on that as well. You know, I, I think I made in my head the assumption that you're probably going to need at least one new code enforcer at the police department, if not two, depending on the volume and the activity that you're talking about. Basically, I costed out what a code enforcement officer at the county makes right now, and that's approximately $75,000 a year. I think a lot of the other things you're discussing, you know, how do we, you know, make sure that, you know, whatever element may follow is taken care of, care of from a police department perspective? I think actually Chief Fordall addressed that very well in his budget presentation to you all. I think he said that right now, his department is kind of, and he can speak for himself, you can call him up here, but I discussed this with him, you know, could use one to two more people if something like this happens. So you're probably talking a three-person effort in the range of 225 to 300,000 dollars. That would be my, my best guess at where you would start. Now, if there's not a lot of activity, you might pull back. If there's a lot more activity, you may have to go forward from there. So that's kind of where I would say, at a minimum, you're probably looking at, to keep the area safe and everything operating properly. My opinion, not an expert. Now I'll go on to the, to the revenue sources. I sent you all some research that I did, as well as, you know, reading it myself, I'll just kind of summarize some of the things that I kind of discovered from the research. One is that at the state level, they're going to charge a 15% excise tax on the purchase of all, all cannabis. That is part of the funds that the state is saying, that if we allow cannabis to be cultivated, manufactured, that we should get a distribution of money from. And in addition to that, they did a cultivation tax, depends on, I guess, if it's plants or seeds, or in some sort, and it ranged from 2.75 per ounce to 9.25 per ounce. When I read the documentation, I read that there was going to be challenges to cities and counties, because those taxes are already very high. And if you push your taxes a little bit too high, on top of those taxes, which are already high, that it may stop people from coming in here, that's just a side note. That all being said, there are two ways that you make funds from this. One is by developing a fee. I talked significantly to Rebecca Callen, part of their structure is set up as a fee. Fees are cost-based. You can only charge for the cost of whatever service it is. So if we come up with a fee for a business license, or some kind of license to do any in the cultivation, manufacturing, we would have to say, how much does it cost for us to give that license to them, ensure that their place is fire-safe, you know, is protected from a security standpoint, and charge just what we think it would cost? Those types of fees do not get counted towards our gan limit, so those are not a concern.
Can, can the cost of an additional officer be calculated into those fees?
No, because it would have to be the cost of giving them, or maintaining the license itself. It does not pertain to other activities may, that may occur because they happen to have that license.
So what is the county charging for fees for-
Like, $5,000. For, it's, they have a $5,000 registration fee for large grows, or something, it kind of varies, yeah.
It's for cultivation, though.
Anything commercial is fine?
She's, she's an expert.
Anything over 200 square feet is made to speak from the podium, please. Thank you.
Good information.
It doesn't need to be recorded.
Anything over 200 square feet is considered commercial. Anything commercial is a $5,000 flat fee. And there is a Nexus study that is included in the permanent regulations and the UO, so that that fee limit can be evaluated to see if it does cover the cost of managing the program.
So that's a legitimate cost, that, that would be a fair cost under anybody's-
The county has yet to do a fee study, so we don't know if it is covering the management of the program or not. It could go up, it could go down.
Okay.
Can I answer, can I report that?
Jennifer Smith.
Jennifer Smith, thank you.
So you need to talk to the experts. So that all being said, you know, I, I read some documentation that said, even if, if you decide not to allow anything more than the, the minimum, which is growing six plants indoors somewhere, that we could actually come up with a fee for a business license, even for that indoor growing. So that's a possibility, whether you decide to expand past that stage of the game, or just deal with, you know, some kind of ban, and deal with what the state limit is.
We can charge a fee for the six plants that we're, we have to allow-
That's how I understood it, yes, because there's some, you know, you'd have to come up with the cost of, you know, potentially, we'd send our fire, our deputy fire chief in to, to go in and say, are you fire-safe, or, you know, are codes being paid attention to? We could make that a renewal thing every year, where we inspect and make sure that those, even that part of it is going okay.
Julie, with the, with the, also water and electricity, there's been a, that's something else that has to be looked at, because there's been a lot of problems with the use of waters being really increased tremendously in order to use, to water plants and so on.
That, that's a good point. I don't know if we can take that through rate situation, and put some kind of surplus pay on people who are in residence, who are growing it, so that they maybe get some kind of surplus charge to the use of the water over and above what a regular residence would use. I think we could do that, I don't think we have any control on the electricity side.
Some of the things I've read, yeah. That they, that's possible, and even limiting and cutting off at a certain point.
Those, again, are fees, they don't go against the, the gan limit, so I think we could do any of those things.
I have two questions. One, the legality of that, 'cause I know it was talked at the league, a meeting down in Ontario, on the legality of doing that.
On doing what? Putting surplus fees on a residence who's now growing?
Yeah.
Do you have an answer?
There were multiple talks on that. I know it was an issue, and the reason they brought it up was because the city of Oakland, and there had been some not-so-good things come out of that, so I would want to know more about that before I even would have considered that.
Oh, we would, we would definitely know what we were doing before we proposed it. So, that's, it's just speculation at this stage of the game, and we would look further into it.
Okay, and then, based on, I guess, the speculation is, how many pe, if we were to do that, how many people are actually gonna take a permit out and allow, to come in and-
It's not gonna happen.
Have that inspection? I mean, what, what risk are we running? Are we doing more, am I seeing from the work of staff? Are we doing ourselves a disadvantage by adding more paperwork, more permit, more this, than what the cost would actually come out to be if someone were to actually take a permit out?
That would all depend on council's interpretation of safety risks by people having them. I think it would probably be enforced more after the fact. When somebody was reported to have a grow that doesn't have a license, then we'd be sending, again, those additional police officers, and there would be some kind of penalties and fine. The word would get around, and eventually, people would, you know, who wanted to stay steady with the law would start complying, but there's no guarantee. And it would totally be up to council as to whether they think that would produce, you know, some kind of security that doesn't otherwise exist. I'm not promoting it, I'm just saying it can be done.
Well, it's mostly a thought, it's more thought of as like an oversight, you know, like oversight, but whether or not that's even enforceable is wonderful, is questioning, you know, who will sign up? But, but also, something that can be done is, is have an ordinance in which you can't grow outside, six plants outside, unless you have a greenhouse. So if you don't wanna have it exposed outside, then you can pass an ordinance limiting that.
I would think, one way or another, that's gonna affect our police force, 'cause we're gonna get reports of people growing outside, and we're gonna have to find a way to eradicate those, those grows somehow.
Okay, so the fees aren't going against the gan limit?
Okay, so let's talk about our current gan limit. Our current gan limit, it has about $495,000 worth of room in it. It has improved both by the fact that we reduced our budget, and by virtue of it going up every year by the per capita income and population figures. So we're at about a $495,000 limit. What's gonna count against that is definitely any money we would receive from the state through the pass-through of the 15% excise tax, or their cultivation taxes. And we have no clue what that's going to be. You know, there's nowhere really to ask that question yet, because they're not even collecting it yet. So it becomes very difficult to see what the state's going to do with that money. I will, I will again say, I don't doubt that we're gonna get some money, but I am always hesitant about that, because those monies tend to flow to bigger cities, not necessarily to our, you know, we don't tend to give back what we give in, let's just put it that way, from a territorial aspect, and those monies tend to go away eventually. So I guess my recommendation would be that we need to create some kind of structure here that we depend on ourselves with our own excise taxes or cultivation taxes, if we're going to pursue this.
Do excise taxes go against the gan limit?
Absolutely. Now, just, just for your information, an excise tax is similar to a sales tax, except it's not applied on all general purposes, it's only applied on one type of activity. You see excise taxes on gasoline, you see them on tobacco products, you see them on alcohol, now you're seeing them on cannabis. A basic difference of an excise tax is usually the producer, or manufacturer, or the cultivator in this case, is the one who bears the tax, and it passes along as a cost of the product to people below them, as opposed to a sales tax, which you, a consumer always sees, okay, they wanted this much for the product, now they added the tax. So it's, it's kinda buried in there, but, and I guess the best example of that is when you go to the gas pump, and you pull out your gas, probably you're not aware that there's a good 50-some-odd cents or more of taxes, built, excise taxes built into that gallon of gasoline.
Julie, there's something else I was reading about, that, it's that the cultivator pays a tax, which they give to the distributor to give to the government, and the retailer has the excise tax, but the manufacturer, distributor, and lab don't have any excise or any tax, or any sales tax. So those three are not included in the tax, you know, gaining any money from taxes.
Based on what we read-
I didn't get that impression. I got the impression that you could do an excise tax from the sale from the producer or the manufacturer to, to the retailer, and that excise tax would be buried in at that stage of the game.
No, it's all through the retailer that, my understanding is, through the retailer that the 12, the 15% is, the retailer has to keep track of that, and then they, they, the distributor sends it to the government, as well as the cultivation tax comes to the cultivator, and at the other end, the retailer, and in the between, the distributor just gets that money and has to pass it through the state.
That might be how the state taxes collected, but according to the documentation that, Julie, you provide us, a number of different cities are charging a flat fee on labs and manufacturing and distribution.
I, I think it's all in the setup. There's various different setups that you can, that you can coordinate.
That's a view now, yeah, not taking up from what the state does, but if we individually did, that would be different.
Right.
So I, I know for sure that those taxes are subject to the gan limit, unless you have voters approve an exception. If voters approve an exception, they have to re-approve that same exception by vote every four years. So it becomes a very burdensome process for us to keep that there. Might be attractive, though, because people may be willing to, you know, adopt a tax. Now, when you get those excise taxes, my understanding, and Derek, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's no limit what you can use it on. It's not a cost-based item. So you could generate money for other things, we would just only have to pay attention to the difference between our cost going up and the amount of money we're getting in, you know, because as our costs go up, we close that gan limit, one way or another, with one of these excise taxes, or, or with the state money, and it's gonna close how much we have to do other things, but some of this money can be used for those other things. I'll make two more comments. In talking to the county, I got the sense that they are actually going to have to deal with a gan limit issue, potentially this year, if they do not ban cannabis. So they are kind of in the same scenario. I also got advice, both from the county and others, that if we're going to embark upon this, our best bet is to hire an outside consultant to advise us on how to do these things, because they tend to know what's going on in the industry, and they can advise us better than us shooting from the hip. They gave us a suggestion of a company called HDL, which I had did- They gave us a suggestion of a company called HDL, which I had done research on in terms of the TOT audits. They didn't get our contract, but I know of them, I've seen them at conferences, they're well-respected, they sound like they're coming out as a leader, and I would highly suggest that this council put a little bit of money into that to make sure we get this right if we're going to go towards new taxation.
Okay. So the next then would be Susan, who I believe has provided you this information, but for the benefit of the public, perhaps orally report on the contacts she had with the city's insurance carrier.
So I was tasked with finding out what kind of an impact the manufacturer, sales, cultivation of cannabis within the city limits might have on our insurance. And I reviewed our insurance MOC and could find nothing in it about marijuana, which didn't make me comfortable, so I contacted Tom Klein at Bickmore, who is our insurance provider, and asked those questions of him, and at this time, there is no impact on our insurance for any of those activities within the city. However, as a caveat, they have talked about talking about it and making changes to the MOCs, but they don't have a decision on what avenue that they will take. It hasn't gone that far, the discussion has not.
Okay, so the insurance I think I was asking about is the director's officer's insurance?
I was talking about our liability insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was talking about the effects it would have on us as individuals and on our city attorney, if, if, you know.
I, I did not research that.
Okay.
And I, I, and I was just talking on the cuff here, I can't see that would have an impact on you, as, as you're covered now, I'll double check you there, but I don't see how it would. I really don't. Let me check on it, please, or Susan.
Finally, the legal issue, there was a concern about prosecution. What, if we adopt some permissive ordinance, are we, as public officials, as council members, as administrators, as city attorneys, are we somehow potentially subject to prosecution? You know, I don't have a whole lot more to add on this, other than theoretically, it's possible. It happened a number of years ago when Oakland was, you know, at the forefront of taxing medical marijuana dispensaries. I don't, I think that the risk is, at this point, entirely theoretical. We already have two states that have legalized marijuana, and the Trump administration has, and Attorney General Sessions have suggested that they don't intend to take the same position as the Obama administration, but as of yet, they have not announced any new guidance. So at this point, I don't think there's any likelihood that any of us would ever be subject to prosecution. I also, as I pointed out at our last meeting, I think they would go after much bigger fish. You know, they'd go after Oakland, or they'd go after Berkeley or something, if they wanted to make a point to, you know, they'd pick somebody high-profile that's, you know, really benefiting much more than we are. There was a question about what's known as the Rohrabak Far Amendment. This is a congressional rider that was added to an appropriations bill in 2014, and when it was, when it became effective, President Obama signed the budget bill effectively, it prohibited the federal government from using money to prosecute people for, who reside in states that recognize the right to use and possess medical marijuana. And as long as they're in compliance with the state laws, federal money cannot be used to, again, prosecute people in association with medical marijuana. A couple of things about this amendment, first of all, it has to be re-appropriated every year. Thus far, it has happened, and it happened most recently for this year, but it's not certain, and at least the best information I could find, and I'm not an expert on congressional developments, but the most recent information I could find is that it's in effect now, but there's been a lot of rumblings as to whether it will actually be in effect next year. The Trump administration, again, has suggested it doesn't, you know, it has made comments that it doesn't want this bill to be re-appropriated. There was a signing statement by the president when this came up last time, where he made some vague comment about how he intends to enforce federal law, which some people believe means that he really is going to disregard the amendment. But in any event, at this point, what we know is that it applies only to medical marijuana, it has to be re-appropriated every year, and it's, it's a source of continuing tension. So that was, I was asked about that at the last time, that is, that is the source of, that is the answer to the best that I could find information on it. But again, I would say that we really have no risk whatsoever of ever being prosecuted criminally if we allow some permissive scheme that is clearly, you know, that would clearly be authorized by our state law. So, trying to look, I think those are all of the questions that I could remember. There may have been more, certainly, but with that, I feel like the staff presentation is done, and so at this point, I might suggest you open up to the public, get their opinions, and then we can come back and talk about what direction, if any, you want to give me.
Okay. Does anybody from the public want to make a comment?
I think that the most important factor in this isn't whether a couple thousand dollars can be scraped up in fees, or, you know, whether you might be able to, you know, get another officer on the force, another $75,000. It's the quality of life of the people who live here in Angels Camp, and we've gone, we've appeared before you again and again and again, and the vast majority of us have said over and over and over again that we do not want to live next to a marijuana farm. Everybody gets their six plants. One plant is enough to keep a pothead good and stoned every single day, 365 days a year. So six plants is more than enough for somebody to stay, you know, to do what they need to do, and it doesn't even need to be medical. It was my understanding from Prop 64, that you could not charge a fee for those six plants, because that would be interrupting the right for them to do it. Everybody gets the six plants, so it would surprise me greatly if you could charge a fee for that. But I think that you really need to consider that this is a very, very small city. I personally have had eight clients who moved to Angels Camp specifically in the last, over the last summer, who fled their longtime homes in the mountain ranch area because their quality of life was absolutely destroyed. They didn't feel safe in their own homes. The stench of the marijuana farms was just absolutely overwhelming and disgusting, they couldn't get away from it, because it just pervades everything all the time when it's around. Prop 64 does have the protections that if somebody's got their six plants, the neighbors can't see them, smell them, know that they're there, they're hidden. If they want to do that in their own home, then they're not destroying their neighbors, and there's just absolutely no reason to have commercial activity. I also read the council packets fairly closely, and one of the things that I really was kind of surprised to hear this time in the meeting was that the Certified Pure Laboratories Conditional Use Permit had anything whatsoever to do with marijuana, because the word marijuana or cannabis or anything else is not mentioned in the consolidated staff report. And I think that it's really important for the citizens of, of the city to, when something is coming in, and it's not just a laboratory that's going to be testing water or something benign, if it's going to be something that has the potential for, for damage and increased crime as drug-related business, that it should be mentioned in the staff report, that that's what the lab is going to be testing. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council and staff. Approximately one year ago, April, this, a different council, two of the members are still here, voted four to one to ban marijuana cultivation in our city, and it also included the establishment of an ordinance banning it. I'd like to read, for the benefit of the, of the present council and the public, what the newspaper wrote at that time. Oh, excuse me, my name is Jack Lynch, Angels Camp, 600 Selkirk. Sorry about that, I was supposed to identify myself. Headline, Angels Camp Bans All Marijuana Cultivation. This is on April 22nd, 2016. Angels Camp residents will soon be banned from growing marijuana, even for personal use. Now, we've heard tonight that personal use under state law is allowed. Angels Camp City Council on Tuesday approved the ban on a four-to-one vote, with Vice Mayor Amanda Folandoff opposed. The ban takes effect on May 4th, after which time residents caught growing marijuana anywhere on their property will be cited and fined, according to city attorney Derek Cole. Cole said the penalties for growing within the city would be pursued to California state law, up to $100 per day for a first, and $250, et cetera. A number of Angels Camp residents spoke on the issue during Tuesday's meetings, and incidentally, that meeting was held at Bret Hart High School, so there were many, many people that spoke. Most of them were in favor of the cultivation ban. Quote, "I have a real problem with growing pot, and that is grown with a lot of toxic chemicals, which will drain into our water systems," Angels Camp resident Kimberly McCarthy said. "I don't want our water table contaminated by grows." Councilman Scott Beal said, although he is sympathetic to the argument that medical marijuana provides relief for cancer patients, "The city does not have the resources to enforce regulation on cultivation." We've heard some discussion about that tonight. "Without proper regulation or infrastructure, anything other than a ban would be irresponsible and reckless," Beal said. Councilwoman Elaine Morris shared Beal's concern. Elena, at that time, was vice mayor. She says, "The city does not have the staff or money to enforce the cultivation of marijuana in Angels Camp. Anyone in need and having permits and medical cards will have other avenues to acquire their medication." Mayor Wes Coombe said that a ban on cultivation would not prohibit patients from access to marijuana, but only prohibit growing a plant in the city. Quote, this is a quote from Wes Coombe, "We are simply saying that our town is too small for cultivation," he said. "We live in an urban environment, not an agricultural countryside, and there will be impacts on other people." As a result of that kind of discussion, and the council then voted on a document, I hope you are familiar with, Ordinance 474, and it's in our municipal code 8.22. And I'll quote on two paragraphs, then I'll, I'll stop. Number seven, and this is in the municipal code. "The city council takes legislative notice that other California cities and counties, which have permitted the cultivation of medical marijuana within their city limits, have experienced serious adverse impacts associated with and resulting from such cultivation. These impacts include," now, these are city words, "include damage to buildings in which cultivation occurs, including improper and dangerous electrical alterations in use, inadequate ventilation, increased occurrences of home invasion robberies, and similar crimes and nuisances to neighboring properties from the strong and potentially noxious odors from the plants and the increased crime."
Jack, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jack, but I need you to sort of move this along, it's been five minutes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Finally, a B, and this is in the ordinance. "The purpose of this chapter is to prohibit the cultivation of medical marijuana within the city of Angels Camp, and to adopt rules consistent with the state regulations to regulate medical marijuana in a manner that protects public health, safety, and welfare of the community from any adverse impacts which such activities may have on nearby properties and residents." Thanks for listening, and that's what the council adopted a little over one year ago.
My name is Judy Axman, 255 Eldorado Court in Angels Camp, and I propose a ban on commercial cultivation of marijuana in the city of Angels Camp. My reason for this ban is on ethical basis. I really hope and trust that the city council will take the high road. Like when you make a decision for your family, you take the high road. I know I've heard all the arguments, you know, for having marijuana, for the revenue stream, it's all about money, and money isn't the answer for the city of Angels Camp. There is no doubt that marijuana cultivation will change the nature of our community in a negative way. There's the danger, especially for our young people, whose brains become changed at a very important time in their lives, and these changes cannot be reversed. And there will be accessibility to marijuana, there is no doubt, if we have cultivation, processing, distribution. The question is, do we want to keep our community like it has been, and for the reason a lot of us moved here? And it takes courage to stand up to the big money that's behind legalization and cultivation of marijuana. It comes down to money, no matter what, and no matter how you slice it. Sometimes, when we're making those decisions that are the tough ones, we have to really search our heart and our mind, and we have to step back and say, what's the best for the future of our community here, and for those who follow? So I just hope and pray that you will take the high road, and that you will bail, ban the marijuana in our city. Thank you.
I'm John Broder, I live at 1860 Finnegan Lane, been a resident of Angels Camp for approximately 14 years. I guess I'm a little behind the game, because I don't know why this is coming up at this point. Could somebody tell me why we're considering marijuana again? Is it some issue other than the two ordinances we have already on our books?
Well, Proposition 64, if we don't make a decision banning every possible, you know, use of marijuana, or, you know, production of, or so on, whatever we don't pass an ordinance on, then as of January 1st, right, 2018, then anyone can, anyone can come in with labs.
So in other words, our.
Cultivation.
Okay, I understand. So in other words, our ban is just a small portion of what we.
Yes.
Ordinance should contain.
Yes.
Okay. I am for the ban, and like the previous speaker, I'm also extremely concerned about the health. A lot of people are concerned about the health from stuff that's gotten into the water stream and the dirt from growing the stuff in this area. I have two reports that I would hope you would read. One is from, let's see, excuse me here. It's a Need for the Public Health Approach to Marijuana, and one of these was written, this is the County of Los Angeles Public Health Department. I also have another one from. I also have another one from, go back here. I'm not too quick at this thing. Another one's from the Ventura County Health Department, Behavioral Health, and it's titled, "The White Paper on Marijuana: What Science Says About the Adolescent Use of Cannabis." Both of these say what the previous lady said, in that anybody who gets marijuana in their system from age zero, which is probably improbable, but up to the age of 25, the brains are not completely formed yet, and it does damage, and lowers the IQ up to, depends on the study, maybe nine points. So, the liability to the citizens of a community to allow marijuana to grow extends 20 or 30 years into the future, when people that are nine points deficient in their IQ have a job that doesn't pay quite as much as somebody else's job, and you wonder why Joe Blow next door isn't quite making the money you are, and you can't put your finger on it. Could be that he smoked marijuana. And this is a burden that everybody's going to bear, and they're not going to know where it's come from. Now is the time to stop that. You don't want to try and stop that later. You can't, because this has been permanently damaged. This is what I'm going to say today about the, my big concern, and I don't think it's been said enough, a bit of YouTube's that I've watched of the board of supervisors, people come before them, not as much as been mentioned about the health problem for the young people. And two of, these two reports, which I can forward to any of you if you give me your email, have the statistics in there of how many young people get the marijuana, and how easy it is for them to get it, and how benign they think it is. So, they're very likely to use it and damage themselves, and they won't even know it.
Freeman Brown, property owner in Angels Camp, and also business man downtown. First of all, it's a pleasure to be in Angels Camp. I think it's a fine city. I have a very good pleasure of working with the City Council, the Planning Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department. This is, like I said, you people are good thinkers. About a year ago, I brought an example of what Carmel, the city of Carmel, did regarding marijuana, and they put in a ban. And I remember I asked each of the councilmembers at that time, "I think you are as smart as the councilpeople of Carmel," and you were, and you put in the ban, four to one. Suggestion of taxing the pot growers will never work. You'll never get enough money to manage the marijuana industry. If you want to see a mess, take a look at Calabasas County today. Leaders in those days, supervisors advocated it, they promoted it, they said it's the best thing that happened to this county was having marijuana, and I wonder if they still think that way. I would like very much for you to continue the ban, at least a moratorium at this time, and I think it's for the good of the people of this city. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll end the public comment and bring it back to the dais for discussion. Who would like to start?
I have a question for Derek. Because of the, there's a potential for the lab to come in, and they're, sorry, usually I don't have that problem. The laboratory that is, you know, proposing to come in, I know that the gentleman said that he will be doing soil samples and water samples, and someday, eventually, possibly the cannabis. If we ban everything, you know, within the city limits, then that puts a complete kibosh on that?
It, it would kibosh, in other words, he's applying for a conditional use permit, correct, as I'm looking at Dave Hanam. So, ultimately, when that matter is determined, when the application is determined, complete, and it's set for hearing, we would not be able to permit any aspect of the business that would be subject to our ban, if we pass a ban.
Okay.
So, but if there's other aspects of his business that can still operate without, unrelated to marijuana, then we would just simply regulate that like regular business. So, yeah, technically, it would apply, but if he can do other things besides marijuana, then good, good for him.
And I'm correct in understanding that, right now, within the city, that people can have personal grow within their home, or outdoors if completely enclosed and not visible by neighbors? Is that correct?
Basically, correct. Although our ordinance, as I've advised before, it has some broad language, but we call it a medical marijuana ordinance, because when we adopted it, Proposition 64 had not been implemented yet, or approved. So, there is that drafting issue of the language is broad enough, but the title and the characterization of the ordinance as a medical marijuana ordinance could trip us up in court if we were to rely on, if we were to say, "It's a ban," and someone were to say, "Well, no, it only applies to medical, not recreational." So, my, you know, my thinking is that if it's the pleasure of the council to ban outdoor to the fullest extent that Proposition 64 allows, we ought to tinker with the language. Or, we can do it as part of a moratorium, if you want to, you know, do that now, and then consider things going forward.
How does Measure C come into play? If we allow manufacturing or lab, or, say, we allow a lab and manufacturing and charge a 7% excise tax on those services, is that something that can be done through Measure C?
My understanding is Measure C does not apply to us at all, at this stage of the game. If it's a county ordinance, we'd have to do something similar.
Even though we voted on it?
Interesting.
And so, again, I know this is just even, it's a possibility that, of the lab, but from my understanding, it's not as if you bring in, you know, hundreds of pounds of marijuana for testing, that it's small amounts. As you said, the state is going, or should be implementing seed to whatever, I don't know what it is. Anyway, but it would be, it wouldn't be as if somebody were coming into our city with, you know, bushels of cannabis. They'd be putting, bringing in samples from, I don't know, whatever, each plant or whatever. I don't know.
It would be an extremely regulated process, and I, I mean, I, again, I, no one's doing it yet, because it's not ever been allowed, but based on the state regulations, I don't think it would be noticeable at all. Again, just the lab part of it, you know? Obviously, growing outdoors, you've heard from the public, and you've heard the county experience, but I don't think laboratories really have any real potential to create nuisances.
Okay. I mean, that's my understanding. I just want to be very clear. I'm trying to, I've, I've been talking to a lot of people on a lot of different aspects of the cannabis issue, because I want to be as educated as I can be in regards to this.
I was going to mention one thing. The conditional permit, I believe, is including manufacturing and distribution. And what the distributor does usually, or the manufacturers, they go and get the marijuana from the cultivator and take it to where they're going to manufacture it, and the lab is part of that process. So, that means large quantity of marijuana would be coming into if that conditional use permit is for all three of those things. So, it's a much bigger deal than just a lab.
So, Dave, do you have any information on that from the gentleman who?
We just got the application last week. I mean, if you want me to go up there, I can, we just got the application last week, so we're still going.
I just want to explain to everybody that we're just not up there because we can't hear. We're not asking you to come up there. It doesn't get recorded if you don't talk in there for the TV.
Okay. Basically, we just got the application yesterday, or last week. So, I haven't really gone through it to the extent. I've only looked through it. I just, I took the title off the thing to let you know that we got a conditional use permit application. So, it's still got to go through the full process, this full vetting, of a review, of site inspection. We haven't even got on site yet, so we'll be going on site here probably in the next two or three weeks. So, it's going to take us probably about five, even though the applicant's not too optimistic about that. We told them it would take six to nine months to process. So, this isn't something that's coming to the commission overnight. This is something that we've got to, we've got to do. There's, we have to just make sure that, we haven't even determined whether the application's complete yet at this point. That was just, so, there's no merits to that project anywhere near what's going on. That's just, that was just an example of, I just put that in there, because that was a project that was, that was coming up. But the merits of the project still haven't been warranted, nor have we done site inspections, nor have we even reviewed the application to the fullest extent. So, that all started happening here in the next, you know, 30 to 45 days, so.
Okay. Joe, do you have any comment?
Yeah, a couple of things, Scott, thanks. You know, I think the group, citizens that spoke tonight, maybe small in number relative to the general population, but they seem to represent, you know, in the spirit of where our constituents wanted. Prop 64 had a significant majority opposed in our city, and I think the council should wander through these six items that Derek presented, and respond to that in a way that's in the spirit of the ban and the sentiments of our constituents. So, you know, I think that's the path we ought to take. I do favor the idea of doing all of this on an urgency basis, whether that's a single ordinance or a number of ordinances, you know, on an urgency basis. That gives us a little bit of a chance to see what else perks up between now and the end of the year that needs to be addressed and fed into our process in Angels Camp.
Okay.
I would have a question. The urgency, I thought it was a two-year moratorium. Is that correct?
It can be, the moratorium can take effect for up to two years, but the idea is that within those two years, you have time to adopt permanent regulations. And the permanent regulations could ultimately be banned. It's not that you're precluded from doing, from not effectively continuing the moratorium, but the idea is that you'll engage in a sincere and good-faith effort to actually look at the issues, you know? Maybe you refer it to your planning commission, maybe you wait and see what the state does in January, February, March, see how all of that goes, because obviously, it's going to either, you know, succeed, or it's not, but we're all going to learn a lot, I think, once those, once the state starts issuing licenses, and people are actually, this track-and-trace program is up, and facilities are opening, so, you know, if you want to take a wait-and-see approach and see how it works, then you can decide what to do. And what you do could be a ban, or it could be some permissive scheme, but you have two years, basically.
Is that 45 days at a time?
It, so, there's two ways to do it. One is, it goes for 45 days, and if you, it depends on if you notice it. If we notice the 45-day ordinance, then when we get to the end of the 45 days, we can continue it for a year, 10 months, and 15 days. If we just do 45 days without a public hearing notice, in other words, newspaper notice, then we do 45 days, we do 10 months and 15 days for the first extension, which gets us to a year, and then we do a further one-year extension. So, what I would say is, if it's the direction of the council to proceed with an urgency ordinance, I could, we could probably get the hearing in the paper if we do it at our first meeting in November. So, then we'd come back after 45 days, and we can, we can extend it up to two years.
Okay. I want to, I want to share a little bit, some of my thoughts, then. My preference, because of what Joe said, that 54% in the city voted, and that means 46%, you know, they voted no on Proposition 64. So, seeing the majority rule is the way in which democracies work, and we represent the people, and the people don't want it. My preference is just to say, ban it as far as cultivation, manufacture, lab, retail, dispensary, distribution, and then to clarify the part where the medical marijuana, so you know, just total cultivation, you know, is banned. And no dispensary, no medical dispensary. So, that would be my preference, also because, I think I mentioned before, that when we took an oath, we said we support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And even though we get tight on money, I was thinking about this, sort of an anecdote, that when, and I left back in my past, and as a family, we had times which we got really tight. But because we got really tight, we didn't go and say, "Well, I have a solution. I'll go out and rob a bank. I'm going to violate the law. You know, I'm going to break the law because I need money." Instead, you know, you found ways to cut back, you found ways to increase your revenues. There were just ways to go about it. So, my preference, you know, would be just banning everything and just getting it out of the way now, for those, especially, and other reasons, because of children, there's so many reasons, that, you know, I could go in for hours, which I won't. But I'm just sticking with sort of the majority rule. We represent the majority, and the majority in Angels Camp doesn't want it, and I think it would be nice and clean just to say, and then we wouldn't have to violate the federal law and worry about whether or not Jeff Sessions is going to come and, to California at some year, not, you know, and just say, "Hey, you can't do that." So, anyway, that would be my preference. That's where I stand.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we should build on the ordinance that we currently have with minimal changes, with a new application, you know, considering what did that mean? But going through reinventing a wheel, and going with an urgency, we're just kicking it down the road again and again. And I think that we have something, and we just need to go and build off of it. So, I say, leave it as what it is, and then focus on the questions that Derek has in front of us, as well as the applicant. You know, if we all remember at our last meeting, it was talked about, you know, we're trying to deal with Prop 64. We're going, we're not looking at commercial cultivation, we're looking at how to deal with Prop 64 within the city limits. So, we're talking about six plants, as well as, you know, the application that's currently in with the planning. And I think that, you know, with growth, we need to look at all of our options and go forward with what, what we have in front of us. But reinventing it is not going to do any of us any good. It's just going to keep going on and on and on. And I think that Derek has some very good questions in front of us, and I think we need to come up with a consensus of what these questions we want to see in the ordinance, or off of the current ordinance we have, and go from there.
Okay. Okay, and that's for me. I don't want to see marijuana in our town. I don't want to smell marijuana in our town. I don't want our kids to have marijuana in our town. And that means enforcement, and it means education. And I know when money's tight, you don't want to resort to crime to fill your pockets. However, I think there's a, there's a compromise here that might help us out. And we do need that money. We do need the money to enforce our police force. It's not, our officers do a great job, but it's not ideal right now. It's seven officers. Even without the marijuana problems there, we're an officer short, maybe even two. An argument can come in that we're two officers short right now without the marijuana issues. We do need money. We need money to educate people. We need money to talk to educated people about the kids, about the, we need the need for a public health approach, about the damages that marijuana does to young kids. We need that, our schools, our campuses, our teachers, our parents, just inundated with that information. But we don't have the money to do that, and if we don't do something, we will never have the money to do that. So, if we can't enforce it, and we can't educate our citizens properly, what are we doing? We're at the mercy, we're unarmed, we're at the mercy of the pot that's coming. So, I'm a realist. It's coming. It's here, and we have to deal with it. So, my thoughts are, try to become, and I can't count on the federal government to enforce it, so let's become part of the solution. Let's consider the labs, the labs that test it, to make sure that it's the legitimate product it's supposed to be that labels it, so that people who, who take this product at least know what they're getting, so that they'll be more comfortable buying the legal, tested, labeled stuff than they will be buying the illegal stuff where they don't know what they're getting. The manufacturing, let's be part of the process of creating a safer product, and the distribution centers. Let's consider that. We might have to step up some security for the distribution center, but I don't want to dismiss it out of hand. If we can, if someone can show me how we can generate- can show me how we can generate, you know, four or five hundred thousand, make up that difference in a gan limit, uh, that adds an officer or two. And that allows us money to educate our kids and educate our families and our teachers. And so I think that that, and, and we can ban the dispensaries. Like I said, we don't, and we've already banned the, the growth, we can, uh, the cultivation, we can ban the dispensaries, we can keep it off our streets as best we can, but it's gonna take effort and it's gonna take money. So the compromise to me is, I'd consider allowing the lab, the distribution center, and the manufacturing. And the manufacturing is, is manufacturing edibles and stuff, and the oils and things like that. It's not, it's not processing the plant and, and drying it, and, you know, it's taking the finished product in to manufacturers' byproducts. So, on those lines, and then if we can, only though, if they can generate, show me a model that can generate four or five hundred thousand dollars. If we, if we can, if we can add a seven percent excise tax or ten percent, they go from five to fifteen percent, excise tax on the labs' gross revenue, the manufacturer's gross revenue, the distribution center's gross revenue. And that money comes to our general fund. We can actually do some good. We can be part of the solution. Because this train's coming. As one person told me, it's like being in a car. You know you're gonna hit that tree. You want a seatbelt on, or you're, are you wearing one or not? So this is our seatbelt. So that's where I stand. Whether we need to put some kind of a, an urgency measure in to give us time to discuss that type of a option, I guess we're willing to do that. Um, I'd love it if we can get support to do that right here, right now. It would, again, it would depend on the proper infrastructure to drive the money to our general fund. If we can't drive that money, that much money, I don't want two hundred thousand. That's not enough to do it, you know, we need to do with our police force and, and for the city. I want four or five hundred thousand. If that can be shown, then let's do it. If it can't be shown, ban it all. I, I'm, I'm with Linda.
Veronica wants to say something before I say something more?
Um, no matter what happens, I, um, am actually a strong advocate for the personal grow, and I personally think six plants is much more than one person needs, but if that's what the rule is, that's what the rule is. I've seen the positive, uh, outcomes and effects of medicinable, uh, medicinal.
Right. Nothing we're doing here today affects the six plants that are public.
Yeah.
As long as they're not nuisance to their neighbor.
And, and like you said, this train's coming. It's here. It's like, if, if you don't think it's here, you guys, everyone's naive. It's been here. It's been here for a long time. So, um, I think regulating it and controlling it is, you know, to the best of our ability and using it to be a positive for us. So I think we need to, uh, make those decisions.
Okay. So, to me, that we have other options. We've discussed, we have six hundred thousand in our reserve. We have discussed an increase in sales tax, 'cause it's, it's seven point two five, and we can easily, it's an eight if place sells in California or more. And so we have other sources of revenue. Why we want to have marijuana come into our city in ways in which we can't even predict when it comes to the lab and the manufacturing and the distribution, we are opening the door for our children to say, mari, you know, marijuana is being, oh, you know, up there and right behind, uh, Middleton's, you know, we're gonna have all of this. And the kids will say, one more reason why I should do it. You know, kids don't take, it takes, you know, I've been, you know, we're probably all mothers and fathers here, and you know that kids just look for excuses. And this, and I think the curious thing is that the state says that sixty percent of all of the excise tax is gonna go to youth education, to go to schools and say, we have allowed marijuana to come into our town and our state, but don't smoke it or don't eat it because it's for, but sixty percent of the money is supposed to go for youth education, telling them not to take it. Doesn't that tell you that there's something wrong with this whole thought? That sixty percent for youth education, twenty percent to increase law enforcement because you're gonna have more criminals, and twenty percent because the environment is gonna be ruined and you have to fix it up? That's what they're gonna spend the money for. I just, to me, it's like a laugh. I just laugh about it. I think, how can people justify having marijuana for everyone, and, and yet it's just going to do harm to everyone? It's gonna do harm for, for, for the children. Law enforcement is gonna be a problem, environment's gonna be a problem. So, anyway, it's, to me, it's, human nature should not go the way of what feels good. Human nature should resist it and be a good example to our youth. It's the way it should be.
Joe, do you have any comment?
I've got nothing to add, but the position's the same. I like the idea of supporting the constituency and doing it on an urgency basis, just because I don't know that I don't know about the process at this point, and I'd like to have it a little more fluid than permanent at this juncture.
Okay. If, if I may, trying to hear where you're at, we could have dra, we could, I could draft an urgency ordinance that would ban outdoor cultivation, just so we clarify that it's not just medical, but outdoor. Um, we could impose regulations for indoor cultivation. I've done that for a couple of my cities, you know, where it's no excessive water uses, things like that. Um, and then we could, uh, you know, what we could do is, sort of building on what Scott said, on all these commercial uses, we could just make it express that during the period of the moratorium, any commercial application for a testing facility, a lab, manufacturing facility, would be subject to our conditional use permit process. And that would require, you know, that's a process. So that ultimately goes to your staff, which has broad review to condition those uses, goes to your planning commission, and ultimately can come to you as a council. So during this period, you have control, and ultimately you could say no, um, if you figure a particular application is not okay. So that might, and then meanwhile, you could study the issue, watch how the state is doing it. So that might be a way to sort of, and then again, I'm not trying to, you, you make the policy, I do, I do the drafting, but that might be a way that all of you get what you're looking for, at least temporarily. And then you can have time to study the issue further.
Yeah, I think any conditional use permit, I would, I would support having it as a one-year use permit as a kind of a trial.
Okay.
And then if, uh, if it turns out after the one year, we found that it was offensive to the community, or it caused a problem in the community, we can just say no.
You mean, the, uh, man, the manufacturing, the, we're talking about, you're saying, you're saying to make it legal for a year?
The only three things I'm even considering are, are the manufacturing, the distribution, and the labs. Those are the three. I mean, everything else to me is ban it and, and go as aggressive on the ban as we can.
Without testing, testing facilities.
Testing and labs, the same, that, I think that's the same thing.
Okay, on the last, you're right, okay.
Yeah. So I think we're being part, again, we're being part of the regulation, part of the solution, and I think if we test it on an annual basis and see how that part works. Meanwhile, we don't see it grown, we don't smell it grown, we don't see it's not sold in our, in our neighborhoods, and we'll have some money to educate the kids. I mean, you can laugh at, yeah, we grow it and we spend for education, but that's, it's here. So what's, the other option, you know, option is don't educate kids.
It's just more here.
And I'd like to leave in the, from the old ordinance, the grandfather in, uh, the dispensary.
What's that?
That's where he grandfathered in, and it's already in the old ordinance. And if we're just gonna go, go off of the old ordinance, I wanna make sure all of that. All of that is stayed in there.
Yeah, the medic, the medical marijuana, um, it's only for medical marijuana dispensary, that application. So that, we wouldn't be repe, you can't repeal something with a moratorium, so that would still be in there.
Okay.
Um, but the question then would be, would we wanna ban commercial storefronts, um, the commercial, in other words, the commercial storefronts would be banned?
I don't wanna ban any dispensaries, and I don't want to ban any logo, ban any logos that contain cannabis leaves. I don't wanna see it. That's, you know, and I think that that's a, I think that's a fair compromise.
And what about deliveries? Would that be, would you wanna ban that as part of the...
That should be, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if the, if the comp, if, we're talking about compromise, and you're gonna ban a dispensary, then you're certainly gonna, then there's gotta be some legal way and allowed delivery. And that just is, this is tractor sale GPS tracking system as it is the manufacturing in the lab. So it, it's gotta go one way or the other.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to deliveries. People should be able to order wherever they want to deliver to their house.
Okay. We, we don't need to vote tonight. I just, I mean, ultimately, you'll vote, you know, and this is, I mean, you know, and, and what I would propose is I'd bring this back to you at our first meeting, um, in November, so that if you want me to make changes, you, we can bring it back at the second meeting, um, but it would be as an urgency ordinance.
I do have one question.
Yes.
With the change of retail, and retail doesn't necessarily mean the actual product, it means also, um, like infusion of certain things, like let's use wine, the wine industry, that, um, oh, we shoot ourselves in the foot by, when we say no retail, and that we're not allowing that type of business as well. I understand the whole going into a storefront and buying a joint versus going into the store and buying infused barbecue sauce or wine, or wine. So how, where are we at with that commercial conditional use from that aspect?
Well, that's really a question for, for you. I mean, I, I have seen situations where there are some topical ointments that have just a trace amount of, of, of ultimately oil that has the canob, CBD, I think is what they call it, but it's a very minute amount. And it's not sold at a dispensary. Somebody wanted to sell it actually at a farmer's market as sort of a botanical thing. Um, so, you know, that's really a question for you. Is that something, I mean, I, in drafting, we could, we could address that so people can do that. So the ordinance wouldn't be as sweeping to cover that if that's, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Well, I guess I was just trying to grasp the understanding of what, um, retail is under sixty-four. Is it, you know, like, it's not just going in and buying a joint, you know what I mean? It's, what are we covering here?
To me, what's important is, I believe that marijuana is bad for you. It's bad for the kids, it's bad for our public, it's bad for everybody. So I'm not excited about any product, um, that has TCHs. I mean, the, the CDBs, I understand, aren't, aren't what gets you high and what causes problems. And a lot of them are good in salves and oils, so that's a kind of a complicated thing.
Okay. I'm asking that because I've had inquiries about, you know, if I were to open, you know, let's go with a coffee shop. What are my options? Is that considered under what, what aspect? And I'm, I'm just trying to ask so I understand where, where are we at with that? Or if someone's coming in and wants to open, you know, a wine or chocolate shop. I'm just trying to understand, we're trying to get businesses in, and I don't want to create a burden, especially since the last meeting, we basically welcomed them. And said, if you have an idea, come on in, because we're looking at growing this city. And I don't want to be a stopping ground of, oh, no, you can't do this, just because I can go across the river and I'll go buy it in Chanel or something. I, I am looking at the economic leakage that we continue to do in our surrounding areas. And I wanna make sure that I'm, that when we do this, we're looking at, you know, more than just a joint, pretty say.
Well, I, I guess from a regulatory standpoint, if, if a coffee shop or a pastry shop or a bakery can somehow sell a product that has, you know, some cannabis product, and they're not subject to the state licensing scheme, I don't know that we'd have the ability to stop them, um, if they're an existing, if they're an existing bakery or an existing coffee shop, or if that's, if their purpose is to, I mean, in other words, under our current zoning, if you locate a coffee shop downtown, we don't require a permit. It's, it's permitted as of use. And so I think if someone sort of sells a collateral product that maybe has just a little bit of CBD in it, I don't know that our, we would reach that. I don't know that we need to. But the question I have, and I can research this, is if you, I, I don't know you can get past the state process. I think this, if there's any...
It's gonna be the state.
If it's any type of marijuana whatsoever, even if you're a bakery and you just wanna have one brownie that has a little bit of kick to it, so to speak, and nothing else, I think you have to go through that whole process. So as a practical matter, I don't know, you know.
No, and that's what I'm looking for, because if, if that's way in above, then I don't wanna factor this into going, but if there's something, I don't wanna shut that door.
I could look at this and I can deal with that. I can, you know.
But are we not able to?
Second tier thinking.
I just wanna understand where we are.
If we're not able to ban, uh, are you saying that we're not able to ban all sales of marijuana in any, in any kind of substance? We can't...
Well, we might, we might, we might be able to do that.
We should be able to do that.
Yeah, and that, that's a...
We should just say, no one in town can, you know, just close the door.
I think, I think, I don't think a person can sell any marijuana product, even if it's minute trace marijuana product, without going through the state process. And so I think we would have a right to say no.
If we don't license, uh, I know that the state can license if the local area licensed. And I don't know if they're thinking if that's just for cultivation, you know, licensed for cultivation, or is it, is it the city is saying, we're not licensing for anything with that limit, you know, 'cause like, you can't go to the state and say, I want a license for cultivation or for retail, unless we have given them, as a city, a license, right?
Right.
So a permit, yes. So we'd have to permit, like, you wanna have them permit the three guy, the three things, the lab, the, okay. So you, you're saying we wanna give a permit so that they can go to the state and get a permit so that they can open here? That we can also, we can, um, pass an ordinance that would outlaw all of it.
Correct. And then they would, they would not issue it.
And they would not issue it, 'cause they're trying to set, actually, the state is really struggling, 'cause they're trying to set up ways in which they know if the city has licensed, because they're just now, aren't they, just trying to work out a new...
The new law says we have to, we have to have a liaison, and we have to send, we have to notify them of our ordinance, which we will do. And I'll, I'll work with administration, most likely Mary, to do that, depending on what you adopt.
Because I'd like to see both a medical dispensary and the recreational one banned, personally. I'm thinking that, I know Amanda's saying that she would prefer to hold on to the medical dispensary, but I would like to see both banned. I don't know how the other council members feel.
I'm with you on that.
I wanna make sure that there's delivery available. There's people that are housebound.
Yeah. So four things I would support. Manufacturing, distribution, the labs, and deliveries.
And I don't support the three. And delivery, I don't know. I have to study a little bit more.
Leave, leave the dispensary in. It's already been passed and pu, done with, and just leave it in, it's grandfathered in. And what I'm talking about is the one that Derek mentioned.
Well, that, that I would have to do, I mean, that we'd have to do it or repeal of that, which I think we'd have to take to the planning commission first.
Amending the ordinance to deli, to eliminate that use?
That, yes, we have that, we have the, we have the zoning ordinance, well, we have the zoning ordinance aspect, and then we have, I mean, I, I can initiate a process to repeal the medical marijuana dispensary ordinance, but because it's a permanent ordinance, we can't just bridge it with the, um, moratorium. So I can start that process if that's what the council has.
Can we, can we just leave it? Because it's, we're just spinning wheels. I'd rather just, we have a permanent ordinance in place, let's add to what we've just discussed and move forward. I, I don't see why backtracking and going through, and no, no offense to legal, but now we've just made more, we're paying him more money to do more work that he's already done. So I, I'm not comfortable going back and doing a whole repeal process when we've already gone through it. We voted on it, and it's gone. So can't we just go forward and look at these topics and add to it?
The dispensaries were put into a, just a whole list of different uses that we, we did vote on and, and put in, but there really wasn't at that time a lot of discussion about dispensaries. And...
I'm not, if that's the way the council, I'm not gonna support, and anything that goes forward without that, I'm not in.
So you'd rather do a total ban of everything?
I, I'm not, I'm not willing to, to negotiate that. I mean, we've gone through it, it's there, and go forward and add to it. I mean, would, it's just...
Well, I still would want to do away with the medical.
It sounds like, it sounds like the moratorium is gonna come into play, because it's, we're all over the place. And I think there might be three votes for my suggestion.
Yeah, I, I...
Um, but I don't know if I wanna make that motion, because I don't know if it'd be fair.
I, I will try to draft and present options to you, so that maybe we can have a menu of things we can put together, um, listening to you. I, I realize this is difficult, you know, this is a difficult overall subject, and I understand how you're not all gonna be on the same page on each of the many issues. So I think I, I've heard enough that I can bring something back to you. So, I think I, I've heard enough that I can bring something back to you, and it may be a menu of options, and it may be that you'll get what I want, or you'll, you'll get what I present, and then you'll, you know, we'll bring it back to the second meeting in November, where you'll actually take some action. I don't know that we'll get it right out of the chute, but, but I think I've heard enough, I don't know that you're going to resolve anything tonight, so I think I've heard enough to bring it back to you, and I'll work with Mary, and should be an interesting month.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to allow more time for public comment as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, I'll support that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, bringing this up, our second meeting in, in November is the week of Thanksgiving, so just so you're aware of that, just in case anybody's going out of town, the Tuesdays, Tuesday, Friday, and if we have to, we can always do a special meeting, just so you know, so.
Okay.
I already contacted Susan, said I wasn't going to be able to make that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to calendar.
Okay, tomorrow at two P M., there is a COG-TAC meeting. On Thursday, the nineteenth, eight thirty A M. is museum commission meeting, ten thirty A M. is DAC executive committee. On the twenty-fourth, at five thirty P M., there's a UWPA meeting, and the twenty-fifth is the CVV board meeting, that was changed from the twenty-fourth. And Amanda, you're going to the CALAFCO conference for the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. Then on the first of November at five thirty, there's a COG meeting, and we meet back here for council at six o'clock on the seventh.
Okay, thank you. If nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, Amanda, Amanda.
Okay, thanks, Joe.